The June 19, 2018 meeting in the City Council of the City of Springfield, Illinois, is called to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath?
Here.
Alderman Senor?
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie?
Here.
Alderman Turner?
Here.
Alderman Proctor?
Here.
Alderman DeCinsolo?
Present.
Alderman McBenham?
Here.
Alderman Tylin?
Here.
Alderman Donlin?
Here.
Alderman Hanauer?
Here.
Mayor Langfelder?
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. And we do have a couple of proclamations and then also a couple of presentations. But the first proclamation, I'd ask the 7th grade Grant Middle School Track and Field Team to come forward if they would, please. Alderman Hanauer, if you'd like to join us. It's always great when we can recognize the youth of our community because they're our future. And in this case, Alderman Hanauer at Grant Middle Schools in Ward 10 had requested a proclamation good for their great efforts in the track and field. Okay, I got the wrong Alderman up here. I'm teasing you. Alderman Tylin can come up, but go ahead, Alderman Hanauer.
Sit down then, Ralph.
Yep. Well, let's see, we all get along. That's what's good. That's right. We really appreciate it. So, thank you very, thank you very much.
Tonight.
That's right. And so, really, that shows what a small community Springfield is. As Alderman Hanauer pointed out, he knows the coach, and that's what it's all about, is forming relationships across our whole city. So, I apologize if I butcher anybody's name, you know, but I'll give it my best. But really, what it points out to the young individuals of the track and field, it not only goes within that particular sport, but also reflects into the classroom. And as they grow older, it's something that they'll remember all their lives, and it helps form their character for the future, which will represent Springfield. So, we greatly appreciate their achievements, which put Springfield on the map from a statewide perspective. And it reads, whereas today we celebrate the 7th grade boys' Grant Middle School Track and Field Team and recognize their outstanding achievements in their 2017-2018 season, and whereas teammates Javion Bardwell, Malachi Bradley, DeShawn Browley, Artes Hanson, James Harris, Randy Kyles, Tyre Lott, Keishon Singleton, DeAndre Stewart, and Corey West showed dedication, determination, and drive. And whereas at this past spring's Illinois Elementary School Association, IESA, state championship, these athletes came out strong and focused and placed high in the competition, including James placing first and DeShawn placing second in the 100 meters. Yep. And then, we're gonna have a race after this, right, Alderman? In the 110 hurdles, Artes placed first. In the 200 meters, James placed first. And DeShawn placed second. Keishon placed seventh in the 400 meters. In the 4x100 relay, Tyre...how am I, Tyre?
Mr. Mayor, can you have them raise their hand when their names called?
Yeah, that'd be great. So, in the 4x100 relay, Tyre?
Tyer.
Oh, Ter.
Tyer.
Tyer, Javion, right?
Yes.
Tyer, Javion, Keishon, right? And Corey placed fourth. Javion, Keishon, Corey, and Andre placed fifth in the 4x400 relay. And Randy placed second in the high jump. And whereas these outstanding finishes, the generals surpassed 264 other teams to be named the IESA 2A Track and Field State Champions for the first time in 25 years for the school. And whereas this could not be done without the gift of time, mentoring, and leadership from their head coach, Neil Taylor, and assistant coaches Nate Peter, Claire Miller, Stephanie Webster, and Tony Webster. And whereas we would like to acknowledge the support of these young athletes received from their families, fans, teachers, and school leadership, including their principal, Cindy Bauer, and athletic director, Brian Hasek, thank you for providing the encouragement needed to show that hard work truly does pay off. Now, therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, along with the City Council and residents, do hereby proclaim that Tuesday, June 19, 2018, shall be Grant Middle School 7th Grade Boys' Track and Field Day in the City of Springfield, and call upon all citizens to formally recognize their achievements in the 2017-2018 Grant Middle School generals, track and field team, and their coaches for all they've done. Congratulations. Not only did we beat those teams, we smoked them. We scored 65 points to the second-place team's 24, which, by the way, was Springfield, Washington. And I cannot go without saying that our 7th grade girls also finished ninth. So, it was a great season.
Do you want the boys to line up back there for pictures of family or ahead?
Family, right.
This way here, you guys get a good shot of the background.
And Coach Taylor in long pants.
Sorry. Do you guys look at one step the city seal's forming back there? You're part of it. Smile at your state champs, guys.
You have the number one.
Number one.
Mayor, you need to get around on the third step so you'll be taller than everybody else.
Next, we'd like to recognize the Bike Advisory Council. Anybody from the Bicycle Advisory Council here would like to come forward if you would, please? And as they make their way forward, the Bicycle Advisory Council was established back in 2008, I believe under Mayor Dablin. And what they've done is raise the quality of life in Springfield and the surrounding area, which we really appreciate. Because as we're in competing markets with other communities, that's what they look at, is livability of any community. And part of that is the walkability, bikability of those communities. And for myself, I first remember it when Michael Higgins came to a DSI meeting, and he said, "The mayor's forming this bicycle commission," and he's been part of that, I think, from the inception. And so, it goes to their great works. But I'm just gonna highlight a couple of them and then read the proclamation. So, it was established 2008. They participated by creating the SATS Bicycle and Pedestrian Plan adopted by the City Council in 2013. And SATS is the Springfield-area transportation study. So, it goes hand-in-hand with our infrastructure plan. They work with Public Works with regards to that. In downtown, if you look around, there's 25, or there are maybe more now, Lincoln-themed bicycle racks installed in the downtown business area. They've equipped buses with bike racks. On the trails, they have bicycle repair stations. And with regards to education, they taught safe riding skills through bicycle rodeos, youth bike clubs, summer camps, and helmet fit seminars. They've also partnered with our police department, with community policing by bicycling in the neighborhoods, and the police officers assist with youth bicycle events and rides. And probably most noticeably is the annual Curb Your Car to Work Challenge, where they promote walking, bicycling, asking people to carpool, and taking public transportation. And then also, just this year, I believe, was the downtown open streets on the weekend, which allowed blocking of the streets where people can bike downtown. And that's a great first-year event, and hopefully will continue on for the future. So, the proclamation reads, whereas riding a bicycle is a valuable or viable mode of transportation, an excellent form of recreation and physical activity, and whereas thousands of Springfield residents ride bicycles throughout our community, including trail riding, races, bike club events, and educational programs, as well as for daily activities such as commuting, running errands, visiting friends, or going on for neighborhood rides. And whereas the City of Springfield has recently been designated a Bronze Level Bicycle Friendly Community by the League of American Bicyclists, a nonprofit membership organization that has recognized 450 communities across all 50 states as bicycle-friendly communities. And whereas the designation of a bicycle-friendly community recognizes the ongoing efforts of private and public organizations in Springfield that are working to improve conditions for bicycling through investments in bicycle facilities, safety education, or encouragement events, and other activities. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists has recognized several other organizations in the community for their bicycle efforts, including the Illinois Department of Revenue, University of Illinois Springfield, Maulner's Restaurant, and the Springfield YMCA. Now, therefore, I, James O. Langfelder, Mayor of the City of Springfield, together with the City Council and residents, do hereby confer upon the Mayor's Bicycle Advisory Council, Springfield Bicycle Club, Office of Public Works, Springfield Police Academy, the highest commendation from our city for their efforts to improve bicycling conditions that resulted in the City of Springfield being recognized as a bike-friendly community. And we can't thank you enough for all your efforts, because you put us on the map with regards to another aspect of sustainability, but walkability and bikability, and promoting Springfield for economic development efforts with regards to quality of life and living together as one. So, we really appreciate your efforts, and if you'd like to come forward and say a few words, we'd appreciate it. This is the award they received. It says, "The League of American Bicyclists since 1880 is pleased to designate Springfield, Illinois, as a bicycle-friendly community in recognition of your outstanding efforts to encourage bicycling in your community 2018 through 2022." And that's the Bronze Designation. So, congratulations for working on our behalf. If you'd state your name for everybody, that'd be great.
My name is Kevin Green. I'm a member of the Mayor's Bicycle Advisory Council. And I just want to mention briefly, this is a real partnership effort. We couldn't have made this happen without the help of Mark Mahoney, the head of the Public Works Department, as well as, we had some great assistance from the police department, as well as Springfield Bicycle Club and others in the community. And this award really is designed to try to help us make the city a safer, more convenient place to bike, not only for recreational purposes, but also for transportation. And I want to thank the mayor and his staff for helping us make this happen. Thank you.
And we'd like to call Director Mahoney up, and you can receive this, because I know you've worked probably most diligently on this. And we all know you're everybody's favorite director, so if you wouldn't mind coming forward. And this is one of the reasons is...
So far.
That's right. It is all he does. You know, they've done it on a limited budget, which we all know, and has done great works. But really, it's about partnering with the community and moving forward together. So, congratulations.
Thanks. Really, actually, the group, it did all the work, and actually, they wore out two traffic engineers that we used to have, and they're gone, as well as Nate Bottom and others. I know a Dean has been involved. So, it's been a really good group effort. These guys have been the backbone. And they put a lot of work into it over the last few years trying to get this. So, congratulations to you guys.
Next, I'd like to call upon Philip and Sarah Jensen. I think they're maybe at our...someone was here at our last meeting, and it went so long that they had to come back today to give a presentation. But it's very important, it's the Mission of Mercy Dental Clinics. And Raj Damrat's here to join them. And I'll let them give the overview of it, but it's a community outreach with regards to dental services.
Hi, my name is Sarah Jensen. I'm the program coordinator for the Illinois Mission of Mercy. It's sponsored by the Illinois State Dental Society Foundation. That is who I'm employed by. This is a program that we do every other year. We started it in 2010, and we do it in a different location across the state of Illinois each time. So, we've had a Mission of Mercy in Bloomington, Peoria, Grayslake, Collinsville, and this year, in 2018, we're gonna be here in Springfield. What we do at a Mission of Mercy is it's a two-day dental event. It's free dental care for 1,000 patients a day. So, it is our goal to see 2,000 patients during...it's a Friday and Saturday, July 20th and 21st. We hope to, and we fully intend to, deliver over a million dollars' worth of dental care during that time period. We will have 100 dental chairs over at the Bank of Springfield Center. And I brought a few statistics that I just did this afternoon. As of today, we have actually, I just checked, we have 917 volunteers that have registered. 257 of them are dentists. We have 15 states represented, everywhere from Washington to Connecticut, Texas, Idaho, Iowa. There are 152 volunteers so far from the City of Springfield. There are 87 volunteers that are from the City of Chicago. I would say a lot, probably the most of our volunteers are coming from the Chicago region, which is interesting this time around. We are partnering with the Wyndham. As of today, we have 424 nights booked from July 18th through the 22nd. 174 of those rooms are booked on July 20th, that Friday night. So, this is a huge event, and we really wanted to make sure everybody here knows about it. There are a couple of things that we wanted to make sure that you're aware of. We're doing something new this year, for the very first time. On Thursday, which is our setup day, we'll start setting up at 8:00 in the morning. At 1:00 that afternoon, we will screen, we hope to screen 250 U.S. veterans. The intent is that they would be first in the door on Friday morning. We're gonna ask them to report between 5:30 and 6:30 in the morning. That way, they can circumvent having to go through medical triage, x-ray, and dental triage again. They'll go right to their routing and then right to their assignments into the chairs. It is our hope and belief that by doing this, that they, number one, we won't have volunteers waiting to have seats in the chair to provide treatment, because a lot of times that is what happens. But we also hope that many of these U.S. veterans will get care that they so desperately need, and that they can actually go through the clinic more than once and get more than one service. We're very happy to bring this to Springfield, and I know that my husband can speak to what actually happens there more than I can. I mean, I can, but I'm not a clinician, so who is? So, I don't know if you want to say anything.
Just as a clinician, I'm one of the local lead dentists that was very much a proponent of trying to get this event held in Springfield. I thought it was one of the ideal locations in the state to have this, and I thought we would have more than really good community support. This is my seventh, sixth or seventh Mission of Mercy, five in the state of Illinois and two in other states. At the end of the two days, it's the best hired, I think, I've ever been. There is nobody that has ever walked away and not been impacted by this, me included. So, I'm very happy to be involved with the Mission of Mercy and intend to for a very long time.
What is the dates again, please?
July 20th and 21st. Please let your constituents know about this and pass the word about the U.S. veterans. We are registering the veterans at the Sangamon County Veterans Assistance Commission. They can go there, they can register, they will provide, actually, they will provide them transportation if they need it. It's the only time we've ever allowed any preregistration for this event. And once we hit 250, we're done. So, I know I have had patients call me, potential patients call me, asking if they could pre-register as well, and I tell them very nicely that they can't. We will have patients that are camping out. We've had them as early as a Wednesday before. We open the doors at 6:00 a.m. on Friday. I don't know if that will happen here. So, are there other questions? I know Raj has participated in several of these as well, so...
Alderman Tylin?
I know that several of the Aldermen are very active with social media and keeping contact with their constituents. Do you have a social media presence that is something that can be shared?
Absolutely. We have two Facebook pages, actually. The 2018, it's called 2018 Illinois Mission of Mercy, and then also the Illinois State Dental Society Foundation. And we kind of post on both sites. And then our Instagram for this year, and I'll check on this, I will let you know, I think it's pound sign or hashtag, whatever, 2018 Illinois, I-L-M-O-M.
I would say that you're welcome to tag me.
Okay.
I will share, and I know that Kristen...
I have all the events already, and I'm happy to share them with everybody else.
And also, if you would like some, the City of Springfield possibly may be able to help you if you talk with Julia before you leave today.
Okay.
We may be able to...
Actually, Juan Wertz has been working with them.
Juan has been helping us tremendously, so, yes. It's been great.
Alderman Redpath?
First off, thank you.
You're welcome.
This is amazing. So, anything else we can do to help you, obviously, I know the mayor's all over this, but this is amazing.
Thank you. Well, there are a couple of things, actually. Volunteer.
Let me give my check though, now.
You asked. Volunteering would be, I mean, we need general volunteers. There are no patients that are ever left unattended at a Mission of Mercy event. So, you know, we need lots of patient ambassadors. It's actually how I got involved in the Mission of Mercy event, and I love it.
We can figure that out on how to volunteer through this.
You can do that. You can go to the Illinois State Dental Society Foundation website.
Okay.
ISDSF...no, it's ISDSfoundation.org, and the registration link is right there on the homepage.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Senor?
I just wanted to tell Dr. Raj thanks. He got me involved, and I appreciate getting involved, and especially with the veterans, that you all are reaching out to them extra special. Those people that have served and made this place what it is for us to live in, I extra specially appreciate that. But anything else I can do to help get involved, Dr. Raj, and with you all, I would be more than likely, I would love to do that.
Spread the word to the veterans.
Thank you.
I just want to thank Dr. Jensen for getting involved in this, because I'm gonna be in your office Thursday morning to get my teeth pulled.
Really punch him hard in there, will you?
Of course, it really hit him up.
How many volunteers do you need?
We have 2,500 shifts, I should say. We have, but a lot of people volunteer for multiple shifts. Right now, where we have the most openings are in the patient ambassadors. I'm very happy to say that with regard to the dentists, we have very few openings.
Great.
So, we're gonna be ready and raring to go.
And how long is the shift?
A shift, we have two shifts typically. It's 5:30 in the morning until 11:30, and then from 11 until 5:00. And we usually leave when the last patient is done. So, and that's typically in the surgery area, and it's usually between 6:00 and 7:00 at night.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, one of your participating dentists in Ward 7 contacted me 24 hours ago, and I already posted his site to, I think, the foundation's site on Twitter and on Facebook. There's already a lot of those folks passing it around, so the word is getting out in Springfield, so thanks a lot.
Yeah. The other thing to actually spread the word about is that we do feed our volunteers. You know, it's like, we don't, you know, make them starve that whole time, but we do feed them. We have catered lunches and catered breakfasts, and then on Friday night, we'll have a dinner over at the Wyndham where we will have Dr. Ashton and the Root Canals playing, so, yes.
Sounds tempting. Raj, would you like to say anything?
Well, you know, I do want to mention that we couldn't do this event without all the help from the dentists throughout the state, especially the Chicago group. There's a group that is very loyal to Mission of Mercy, and they're the first ones to sign up. And we couldn't do that with all their help. So, we've got, there's a lot of people, we're the front, you know, you just see us, but there's a lot of people in the background that are very dedicated to this and have committed themselves for all these years. So, I appreciate what everybody else is doing.
Great.
And they do bring their families, and they will be kind of flooding the downtown area that weekend, so...
Excellent. Now, I know Dr. Sloss is here. Are there other dentists in the audience that'd like to stand up, if you would, please? Very good. Well, we appreciate all your good works, and really, tonight shows, the beginning shows, the greatest asset are our people. You know, you start with the young individuals from Grant Middle School to our bicycle, and many organizations that volunteer their time onto the dental society, as well as everybody else. So, that's what makes Springfield a step above others, so we really appreciate you making that happen for us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Now, we'll proceed to the zoning portion of the meeting. First item on the docket is number 2018-012 for the property located at 154 Wabash Avenue in Ward 7. Petitioner is J.I.A.S. Liquor Corporation. Present zoning classification is B2. General Business Service District, Section 155.034. Requested zoning relief, reclassification to B1. Highway Business Service District, Section 155.033, and a conditional permitted pursuant to Section 155.033(c)(7). Taverns and microbreweries, exclusive of drive-in or drive-up windows for the sale of alcohol, and 155.200 taverns, microbreweries, country clubs, and golf course clubhouse with liquor sales by the drink, and 155.033(c)(8). Conditional permitted uses in the B1 Highway Business Service District, packaged liquor sales, exclusive of drive-in or drive-up windows for the sale of alcohol, and 155.210 packaged liquor sales. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval of the B1 zoning and a CPU pertaining to a packaged liquor store and a CPU pertaining to a tavern, provided the tavern and packaged liquor store uses are limited to the existing building footprint of approximately 4,800 square feet, and that the hours of operation are consistent with the city liquor license. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to discuss this petition and hear from the Alderman on some of the issues presented by the petition.
And move for discussion? Is there any questions or comments from anybody, any of the Aldermen?
Mr. Mayor, I can give a summary if you wish.
Sure.
And I met with the attorney representing the owners, Mr. Gordon Gates, yesterday at the establishment, and with the joint owners. And this happens to be an establishment I've patronized over the years. This establishment is facing stiff competition from some of the new entries along Wabash, including Benny's, and before that, nearby Hy-Vee. They've both got vast liquor spirit and beer products. What's unique about this situation is that basically, this is a packaged liquor store that wishes to get zoning so it can... store that wishes, wishes to get zoning so it can become a bar, so that it can get video gaming. And there was not much discussion of the, of the precedent of this situation at the zoning matter. It happened to be the same night, Chuck, that the, the lake discussion took place about the commercial zoning at the lake. So there wasn't much discussion at zoning. There were two in opposition to the petition the night of the zoning. Economic Director Valdezal was in opposition, and our former zoning director, Joe Gooden, was in opposition to, to the motion. In the, in the past, we, to my recollection, we've had a couple of liquors, packaged liquor stores that wanted to get zoned for saloon in order to get video gaming, and my recollection is we've denied a couple of them. If, if we open the door to this one, you know, we may get more of these, that's one of the issues. I understand the, you know, the competition from Hy-Vee and from Benny's. When they got their liquor licenses, I did have a discussion with them, and they said they were not going to go for video gaming. This particular situation, it kind of, it, and I know our attorney, Gordon Gates, you know, he and I had a good discussion about this yesterday. There is some parallel in this case to the Lucy's and Betty's places, where they initially came in and got zoned, but they weren't really true bars. It was just, they, they got permission to pour the liquor, but they weren't true bars, but they got video gaming. And then we kind of, as a council, took steps to tighten the reins on that, and, and so there haven't been any Betty's or Lucy's since then. Attorney Gates, he knows that we already have the highest density of video gaming of any city in the whole of Illinois, and so this is just more concentration. Mr. Gates says, well, there's no harm to the, to the city if we allow this, but I think the real issue is, will there be harm to the sites that the legislation that the General Assembly passed were intended to benefit by video gaming? Namely, true established bars, restaurants, fraternal organizations, including veterans organizations, and truck stops. Those are the four types of establishments that the state legislation intended video gaming to assist. And so this is a variation on that. I'd like to hear what the aldermen have to say about it, and, and of course, Mr. Gates may wish to speak about it. But in summary, if we expand this further to other types of activities, that takes away from the amount of video gaming taking place at our established family restaurants, family, or I don't mean to say family, but the established neighborhood bars and restaurants, and our fraternal organizations. So that's it in summary.
Great. I'd ask Gordon Gates if you'd like to come forward, and then we can entertain questions or comments.
Thank you. Yes, the, we have had discussions on this, and Joe and I have been talking about video gaming for years, not just on this case, but just in, in, in general. First of all, let's talk about what's really before you guys today, which is a simple rezoning from B2 to B1. This is all it is. We've asked for permission to, to be able to put a tavern in this packaged liquor store. That's what's really before you. Now, we aren't going to, you know, try to hide the fact that we're doing as much as we can, looking at as many options as we can, to try to save this business, which will likely include video gaming if it's available. I think what, what's important here is, and I know there is some history with, with other liquor stores going in this direction, but I think ours is unique in a lot of respects. First of all, as, as Alderman Miniman noted, this, this business has been here for a long time. I think that we tried to check, check it back, and we got back 40 years, and it was there 40 years ago. It's been there for 40 years at least. My client has owned it for 10 years, so when the alderman mentions, you know, trying to preserve local businesses, that kind of sets my hackles up, because this is one. This is a local business. It's owned by local people who pay local taxes. It's a good business. It's run well. The Liquor Control Commission will, Commissioner will tell you that this is a clean business. It doesn't have any problems with this liquor license, pays its taxes, provides a valuable service, and it is in a position where, because of decisions made by the city fathers and by you folks, it is, the market has become very difficult. We have, as a city, decided to let Benny's come into town, they get a liquor license. Even though the same arguments that Mr. Mc, Alderman McMiniman stated were certainly true, we let Benny's in despite the fact that they were clearly going to harm local businesses. So that argument, again, kind of falls on deaf ears for me. I don't know when it became the city's business to pick winners or losers, but certainly, when we let Benny's in, there wasn't a whole lot of concern about what was going to happen to my clients. So Benny's is there, Hy-Vee is there, glad to have both of them. My clients have no fear of competition. But as a result of that, the market has changed, the playing field has changed, and in the last six months, we've added Benny's. In the last several years, we've added liquor licenses to Shop 'n Save. We've offered liquor licenses to the CVS down the road, to the Road Ranger down the road, and All About Wine. All of those stores are within a mile and a half of my client's store, and have, obviously, you guys gave them permission to do that, great. Competition is wonderful. But, the, the downside is, is that my client is suffering. He, obviously, has no beef with competition. All he's asking for is the freedom to compete on an even playing field, to take advantage of all legitimate, available business opportunities that would fit within what he does. My clients own three other liquor stores in this city. They're heavily invested in this town, and they know liquor sales. This is not a Benny's, Betty's, Bubba', whatever the heck there are. By the way, why are there no men? Why is there not a Bubba's or a Max's? But anyway.
directed towards women.
Lucky Pizza's out there now.
Gotcha. Anyway, so all the, those pop-up video gaming terminals where the people pretend to be a liquor establishment are annoying to clients of mine who are in the, actually in the liquor business, one of which is my client tonight. These people know liquor. They are liquor salesmen. They've been selling, responsibly selling alcohol for many, many years, 12 years on this location. They are not a pop-up, pretend organization. They've, they've been doing this for a long time. Now, I understand, from, as I say, long ago conversations with Alderman McMiniman, I understand his objection in general to video gaming, and I get it that we do have a pretty high density of these, but I don't really understand why that's a problem. As I said last night to Joe, you know, what, what interest is it of the cities to, to deny my client the right to have a video gaming license when Betty's, Bubba's, and everybody else has one? His concern was, well, it, you know, it might hurt existing holders of those licenses. That one bothers me a lot. Why is it that the, the folks that got them perhaps somewhat bending the rules, why do those people have them and get to keep them when a legitimate outfit, who's been in town, who is the perfect person for the use of these things to try to supplement his income, why, why does the city get to decide, well, we want Betty's and Betsy's to survive, and we don't want my client to survive, simply because we maybe handed out too many of them in the first place? I don't know, that bothers me. I think my client is uniquely suited for the, the rights that are provided in these statutes. Number one, this is clearly a local, longstanding business, run by responsible local owners who are trying to keep a local business going. This is not, number two, it's not a pop-up store where people are only pretending to sell liquor. This is a liquor store. They're going to continue to be a packaged store, they're going to continue, they're going to be a tavern with taps and everything they need to try to make this thing go, and, and they are, as I say, I think they are exactly what the video gaming law was intended to help. Now, again, I, I don't mean to, to pick on Alderman McMiniman, other than the fact, you know, he was the guy that I talked to. So my response is going to be to him for the moment until the rest of you have something to say. But I was thinking, as, as you were talking, Joe, about this concept of, well, we don't want to flood the market and, and squeeze out who you believe are the legitimate users of this, which is restaurants and fraternal organizations. Well, we didn't decide here, as I say, when we let Benny's in, we don't decide that there's too many Walgreens and too many CVSs. You guys don't decide that. You let the market decide. And it does decide. I've, I've got an empty CVS right across the street from me, not real crazy about it, but it's there. But we don't decide how many CVSs, how many Walgreens there's going to be. We throw it out there, let them do what they legally, have a right to do, and hope that the, the invisible hand of the marketplace weeds out the winners and the losers. I mean, I'd love it if you guys would limit how many lawyers can practice in this town.
Me too.
There you go. I got a vote right there. Anybody under 40, go it's own.
I have a daughter that's under 40 that's a lawyer.
With regards to that, real, because before I forget that, I guess the real crux of it is, I think Alderman McMiniman brings up a good point, because the competition, as he pointed out, Hy-Vee or other, you know, you pointed them out, all the places that sell liquor. Okay? So we open up that barn door, how do we limit it? I mean, that's the real key. Otherwise, you're going to have a proliferation of requests. All of them want bars, and they'll do like the parlors have done, and just have a little fridge set up, you know, and sell out of there, and really, it goes against, you know, it's a way around the state statute of its intended purpose. So I guess that's the question, is how do we, how's this really truly an isolated business? How would we craft it? And I'd ask corporation counsel, too, the same question, you're the attorneys. We have other requests, and say it's whoever that sells packaged liquor, could be a gas station, whoever, how do we prevent that horse from just running loose? You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. Absolutely. And I, I guess there's several prongs that I'll respond to. First of all, and maybe this isn't the answer you want to hear, but my first answer is, why do we want to prevent it? I don't, I don't get that. I, I really don't understand why, if the business qualifies, if it fits within the statute, if it's doing a legal activity, why do we get, why do we, as a society, get to pick and choose who gets to do this business, who doesn't get to do this business? I think that's a really slippery slope. So I think I challenge the fundamental concern of, and as Mr. Alderman McMiniman has stated, we have this giant density. Yeah, it's bad. I don't like how many we have, but not, I don't, as a, as a free society, I don't have a problem with it, because my gut tells me, just like the empty CVS, we're going to lose a few of these. We're going to lose some of these places. They can't possibly be sustained. They're going to close. The, the market is going to take over. So I challenge the proposition that there is a point where we get to decide, you know what, that's legal, it's provided for in the statute, we're not going to let you do it. As, as we've, as we've heard from professional staff in the commission, the zoning is not a problem. You guys clearly have police powers as to zoning. This is not a zoning issue. This is a, this is clearly right for a B1 license, clearly right for a tavern. What we're arguing about today is what we're going to do inside that tavern. What we're going to do inside that tavern is perfectly legal, provided by statute. And I also would challenge the proposition that my client's use of it is not what was intended by the statute, because I think it is. I don't think Hy-Vee is. I don't think that, that Benny's is, but I think we are. It's a local liquor store selling liquor by the drink, if we get the permission to do so, a local liquor store that has packaged liquor, also has a bar, and is going to have machines. So I challenge that proposition. We are not bending the rules. We are the rules. We are exactly what the statute was provided to protect. Now, there's an argument that while you weren't a tavern before, you're going to become a tavern. Again, why does that matter? To me, it doesn't matter at all. I want to open up a tavern because my packaged liquor business is failing. I'm going to open up a tavern, I'm going to continue to sell packaged liquor, and as a tavern owner, I get to have machines. So I, I disagree. I think that we are, so, so the question is, from the mayor, how do we put a cork in it? First question is, why do we put a cork in it at all? I don't get that. Don't put a cork in it. I'm assuming that the city's making money off of these gaming machines? The marketplace is going to weed out the ones that are, that are, are good and the ones that are not? Why are we, why are we putting a cork in it? I don't understand that. And then the second answer is, I think it's pretty easy to decide what does qualify and what doesn't. I don't think I have to, to, to cut any fine lines when I say there's a difference between famous liquors owned by local guys and Benny's Beverage Depot. I think that's a pretty easy line for you guys to pick.
To be clear, what we're voting on is the zoning.
That's it. That's all you got. Yeah, it's B1 zoning so that we can have a tavern. And, but I didn't want to, I'm in front of you guys enough that I didn't want to play games with you and not tell you what I'm, what's clearly coming. It's the hope that we'll be able to put a tavern in here, it'll work, and we'll be able to put gaming machines in there, and that'll work, and we will not have yet another empty storefront on Wabash. That's, that's all this is, guys, is, is a couple of businessmen back here going, what do we need to do? All of a sudden, the world changed. I got this giant outfit from Chicago that has 30-some stores. What do I do? And he's not going to put a daycare in there. He sells liquor. So this is what we got.
Alderman Redpath?
First off, times are tough, real tough for brick and mortar businesses, and we know that every day that we, that we deal with this kind of stuff. The e-commerce stuff is beating our butts over here with, on our sales tax stuff. We, we reach out to try to bring new industry, new businesses, whatever we can, to Springfield to try to help that process along. But we always somehow seem to slip by the people that have been here. These guys have been here for quite a long time. My, my proposal is that we go along with what you're saying, only because let the market bear it. Let the market take care of the situation that, that if they're going to make it, they're going to make it. I know that there's, there's other packaged liquor places that haven't. I'm not going to say their names, but I know they do. There's also a lot of small businesses that if they didn't have the, the video poker machines, they wouldn't make it. I can tell you that there's places at the lake, the clubs, that they, they would be closing their doors. It's just times are really, really tough. We need to think about helping a business that's already established, that's been paying taxes, that have been in the city of Springfield and contributing by hiring people and by paying the taxes and, and just being there. This isn't about famous liquor versus Benny's. It's not. It's not really about that. It's, if Benny's comes in with a different problem, we deal with that at that time. We don't have to pit one against the other. Famous liquor has been around a long time. I think it's important for us to try to help support that. Let the market take care of this situation. Are we saturated? We probably are. But you're going to see the ones that, that really can make it, make it. If, if this helps keep this business from going out, I think it's important for us to support that business.
Alderman Tyler?
I'm just trying to understand the steps involved here. What you're looking to do, and Mr. Zirkel, step in if I get something wrong. We're looking for a rezoning which would allow it to go to B1, which would allow the tavern, but then they're still going to have to come back for a double-A tavern license with packaged liquor sales after the rezoning, because the liquor license they currently hold would not allow for the sale of poured drinks at the location. So this is a two-step process, not all in one.
Absolutely.
Okay. I'm just, I just wanted to lay out in my head what we're doing here.
Yeah, there's a whole lot of steps where this will fall apart, but we got to start here.
Alderman Henauer?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I agree with Alderman Redpath on the, on the aspect that, that eventually, I mean, we should, we should let the, the market dictate how many machines we have. The, the machine owners are not going to allow them to stay in, in places that aren't doing the business. They don't know whether it's going to do business there or not. You assume that patrons come in and they will, you know, they'll, they may play, throw a 20 in or whatever. You don't know. As far as fraternal organizations, I don't think that this is going to affect fraternal organizations. People out the lake, they go out the lake because they're members of the club, and then there's machines out there, so they, they go there. I would think, you know- I would think, you know, the restaurant owners, they go into restaurants and they, they play, you know, while they're waiting for their food or whatever. I think this is simply a situation where people are going to go in, they're going to either, you know, they'll buy a drink, probably going in to buy some package, too, and they'll buy a drink, and they'll sit in a machine, throw a twenty in, and if they win, they win, they lose, they lose, they go, and they leave. But, I do think that we, we need to think about, you know, letting, letting the market dictate how many machines we have out there. I realize we have a lot of machines in town, but we must be, people must be playing them, or we wouldn't have them. And, I, I support it.
Any other, oh, Alderman Seener, and then Alderman Turner.
Mayor, how are we affected by the fact that a portion of this lies in the Village of Jerome, and the balance lies in the city of Springfield? What portion is in Jerome, and what portion is in the city of Springfield? And, Mr. Zirkel, with that fact, how would that affect any, any taxes or revenue that's generated from this business?
Well, this, this property's in the city, or they wouldn't be here asking for the zoning change, so all the taxes relative to this location would be just in Springfield. And that area there, along Wabash, guys, and goes in, in and out of Jerome, and this particular area falls, I think the area is primarily south of Wabash, almost up to Chatham, is in Springfield, if my memory serves me. So, this is, falls within the jurisdiction of Springfield, and therefore, all taxes relative to that, the city would be receiving it, not Jerome.
So, how come under the comments section, it has this?
If I can help you out, just because I know this property, we have a strip of parking that's in Jerome. There's no cash register, there's no store, it's just a row of parking that's actually in the Village of Jerome. So, it is my belief, and I've looked into this just as corporate counsel has, since the cash register sits in the city of Springfield, and all the activity happens in the city of Springfield, you guys get all the tax revenues. Jerome doesn't get it, they get the sales, or not, excuse me, they get the property tax of that strip of eight parking spots.
Should that, should that be clarified in this, as to what, I mean, I'd like to see that clarified.
In their petition, it does state that.
It does? Okay. Thanks, Mayor.
Alderman Turner.
I know that this has been a lot of discussion about what may or may not happen down the road, but this is a, the zoning portion of city council, and the only thing that we should be concerned about is the strict zoning issue, whether we accept the staff recommendation and approve the petition. I think that's the only issue that we have. So, I would like to make a motion that we accept the staff recommendation and approve the petition.
Second.
Been moved in second to accept staff recommendation. In second, any discussion? Alderman Proctor, do you have anything?
No, I just want to know what the hours were. I just.
Nine in the morning until ten at night. Thank you.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Eight voting yes, one voting no, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-019 for the property located at 1921 and 1923 East Lawrence and Ward 2. Petitioner is Willa H. Waters. Present zoning classification R-2, single-family and duplex residence, District Section 155.017. Requested zoning relief reclassification of R-2, from R-2, single-family and duplex residential District Section 155.017 to R-4, mobile home and trailer park residential District Section 155.019, and a variance of Section 155.072-AI. Special provisions for R-4, mobile home and trailer park residential district to place one mobile home at 1921 East Lawrence and one mobile home at 1923 East Lawrence. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation to deny. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation of denial.
Second. Been moved in second to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation to deny any discussion. All those.
I just want to say that, you know, this is in a, in an area that's really not very well-lit, very well-kept, and it's close to the railroad tracks, and I think it would set a bad precedent for any further action.
Absolutely. I don't know if the petitioners are here, if they'd like to come up and make any statement? Representatives of the petitioner? All those in favor of the motion to deny, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-020 for the property located at 300 Block of East Union, 600 Block of North Third Street, 600 Block of North Fourth Street, and 300 Block of East Carpenter Street and Ward 5. Petitioners Memorial Medical Center. Present zoning classification is R-3B, general residence District Section 155.018, R-5B, general residence and office District Section 155.021, and B-2, general business service District Section 155.034. Requested zoning relief reclassification to S-3, central shopping District Section 155.032, and a variance pursuant to Section 155.212. General provisions, variances, and Section 155.213. Applications for variances for a variance from the signed regulations of Section 155.320 through Section 155.325. Commercial industrial district signed regulations to allow the S-2 signed regulations for a YMCA or a future medical facility. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation to approve. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, accept, make a motion to approve the petition.
Second. Been moved in second to approve the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The docket number passes. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-021 for the property located at 1510 Melrose Street and Ward 2. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to continue this for thirty more days?
Second the motion.
Motion to continue. In second, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-022 for the property located at 800 and 900 Adley Stevenson Drive in Ward 1. Petitioner is Churchill Little Flower, part of the Roman Catholic Diocese of Springfield in Illinois. Present zoning classification R-1, single-family residence District Section 155.016. Requested zoning relief variance of Section 155.311-C. Residence office district sign regulations, non-illuminated nameplates and identification signs to allow for an electronic message board that does not exceed 25 square feet, instead of the 16 square feet permitted for community facility uses located in the R-1 single-family residence districts. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation for approval. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, move that we accept the recommend, the motion as, from the planning and zoning commission.
Been moved in second to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-023 for the property located at 1551 J. David Jones Parkway in Ward 5. Petitioner is Fresh Visions Community Church. Present zoning classification is B-1, highway business service district Section 155.033. Requested zoning relief variance of Section 155.112. Surfacing to permit parking on a gravel surface, providing relief for the surfacing requirement for a period of 36 months from a date of installation, and 155.480 landscape screening and lighting regulations to delay landscaping the gravel area for a period of 36 months from the date of installation of the gravel parking. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval limited to 24 months. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The recommendation of the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the petitions originally submitted to allow them 36 months.
Second. Been moved in seconded to allow for the original 36 months as submitted. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
It's located in class.
And the docket number as submitted passes. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-024 for the property located at 1025 to 1027 West Jefferson Street and Ward 8. Petitioner is The Flower Connection LLC, as Lisi and Sharon Winch as owner. Present zoning classification is I-1, light industrial district Section 155.040. Requested zoning relief variance of Sections 155.300-C1. Prohibited signs, portable wheeled or trailer signs in Section 155.320-A, B, and E. Permitted accessory on premises signs to allow two A-framed style portable signs, each 54 inches wide and 48 inches tall, that are not 10 feet above grade, to be placed within 10 feet of the street right of way, one facing West Jefferson and one facing toward Madison Street, and less than 100 feet apart. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation. Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to accept staff recommendation.
Second. Been moved in second to accept the staff recommendation. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-025 for the property located at 2741 Prairie Crossing Drive in Ward 10. Petitioners Prairie Crossing Property Owners Association, Inc., easement holder, and Prairie Crossing Building Partnership property owner. Present zoning classification is B-1, highway business service district Section 155.033. Requested zoning relief. A conditional permitted use pursuant to Section 155.341-B and C. Height and size regulations for off-premises signs to permit an off-premise sign in the B-1 district and permit the height of the sign to be 38 feet 4 inches, instead of the 35 feet height per code, and a variance of Section 155.341-A. Height and sign, size regulations of off-premises signs to permit a sign of 310 square feet, instead of the 175 square feet, and a height of 38 feet 4 inches, instead of the 35 feet allowed by code. Provenance, Section 155.001. Definitions, lot to allow two principal uses on a lot, the existing commercial building and the development sign, a variance of Section 155.340-C, to permit the replacement of the existing monument-style sign with the new monument-style sign, which is not above 10 feet in height. A variance of Section 155.340-I and J, to permit replacement of one existing sign with a new sign, allowing for issuance of an additional off-premise sign permit without surrendering permits on a four-for-one basis, of a variance of Section 155.321-A, to permit the total ground signage to exceed 225 total square feet. 137 and 1/2 square feet of Vision Care Associates ground sign, and 310 square feet of the proposed development sign, and a variation of Section 155.320-A, to allow the proposed replacement sign, along with the existing ground sign for Vision Care Associates. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is denial. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is grant petition as submitted, limited to the design presented in the petition and under testimony, and limited to this sign at this location. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a recommendation. We grant the petition as submitted, limited to the design presented in the petition, under the testimony, and limited to this sign at this location.
Second. Been moved in seconded to accept the planning and zoning commission recommendation with regards to the petition submission and testimony. And seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes. Ten voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-026 for the property located at 1100 South 11th Street in Ward 2. Petitioners Hassan S. Hussein. Present zoning classification R-2, single-family and duplex residence District Section 155.017. Requested zoning relief reclassification to S-1, neighborhood, commercial, and office district Section 155.030. Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation is approval. Planning and zoning commission recommendation is accept. The Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission for approval. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a recommendation. We accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation for approval.
Second. Been moved in seconded to accept the Springfield-Sangamon County Regional Planning Commission recommendation, and seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Turner.
Is the petitioner here?
Yep.
Yeah, I had a couple of questions.
Sure, if you'd like to come up, please, and state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Hassan Hussein of Chatham, Illinois.
Okay, so, how many of these types of convenience stores do you currently own?
None, almost.
You don't have any?
No.
So, this is the first one?
The first one, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Previously, we owned, I owned the gas station, nothing cook. It's been years ago. It's been about at least 15 years.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the docket number passes. Nine voting yes, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is docket number 2018-027 for an amendment to chapter, section, or 155, Section 155.227. Petitioners, city is.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this for 30 days, please.
Been moved to postpone for 30 days? Is there a second? Been moved in seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And that concludes our zoning portion of the meeting. This time, the chair will recognize Treasurer Buscher for the presentation of the financial report.
Thank you, Mayor Langfelder. The corporate fund in the month of May had a beginning balance of $2,513,892. We took in total receipts of $10,595,202. We had total disbursements in the month of May of $9,932,674, which left the corporate fund with an ending balance in the month of May of $3,176,420. That concludes, concludes my report, Mayor Langfelder.
Thank you very much. Is there any questions? All those in favor of the financial report, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next, I'd like to recognize OBM Director Bill McCarty for a presentation with regards pro cards.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening.
Before you get started, did you hear the comments that someone over there made about CWP's presentation as opposed to yours?
Yeah, I did.
Just asking.
Oh, I missed that. I like to be thorough, not concise. But, I try to do my presentations with full transparency in mind, but if that's the way of asking me to go quickly, Alderman, I'd be happy to do so.
I think that's what she's asking.
Although, I am a little dismayed that the one Alderman that I had focused on more than anything with this presentation is currently out of the room, Alderman Hanauer, who seems to, to be most concerned about.
I'm in the bathroom, so here we go.
I'll start slow, how about that?
TMI.
Way too much.
So, we have had a lot of, some questions regarding the pro card and usage here over the last, it seems like, six months or so. And, so, the mayor and I talked about it, and he thought it would be good to provide some, some information to the council about various aspects. about various aspects of P-card usage, dollars, the cost and time in dollars, security flexibility, best practices. So we went ahead and put together a presentation. I'll go through it fairly quickly. Certainly, if you have any questions, be happy to answer them, but I wanted to print this out so you could take it with you and look at it, because there's a lot of detail in here, and I certainly don't want to take up your time this evening going through that detail. So let's start with an excerpt from the Government Finance Officers Association, or GFOA, as you normally refer to it, and their best practice guide, which, by the way, is attached to the back of this presentation. And I won't read this whole thing, but I do want to point out that the purpose of a purchasing card is to provide an efficient, cost-effective method for purchasing and paying for small dollar as well as high-volume purchases. And you'll see in a moment, that is exactly the case, and we can demonstrate that. It also can result in significant reduction in the volume of purchase orders, invoices, and checks processed. And again, we'll be showing you that here in just a second. And again, if you want to reference that, it's in the back. So let's look at what I asked staff to do, and I want to thank Travis Hamlin, who's on the budget staff, for doing this. He spent a lot of time talking to the different divisions, departments, worked with the treasurer's office. I'd like to thank Madam Treasurer Buscher for her help in this exercise as well, because we really did want to put together a thorough look at what it would actually take to purchase these items if we weren't using a pro card. And I'll spare you the details here and just ask you to look at the very bottom. If you went from absolutely scratch, not having a new vendor who's not in the system, and you had to go from there to buy an item, what they came up, staff came up with, is approximately forty-four minutes in staff time in various departments and areas in order to get that from establishment of the vendor all the way through the process of procuring the good, receiving it, and making the payment. The cost in time is about twenty-seven dollars. You add in the fact that it costs two dollars and seventy-eight cents to issue a check here at the city, and you're looking at about thirty dollars in order to procure that good without a pro card. Now, procuring that item with a pro card, again, start to finish, just one item, you're looking at about fourteen minutes' worth of time at a cost of nine dollars and eighty-four in staff time, and then nine eighty-eight total. It takes four cents to do an ACH payment once a month for the pro card statements that we get. And we do two a month, one for the utility and then one for the other departments. So significantly less time, significantly less cost associated with using a pro card to procure a small purchase item, a widget or whatever, than, rather than, of course, using a city check process, the way it used to be a long, long time ago. So let's put these into real numbers. Here's a three-month snapshot of activity. The utility and the nonutility departments are separated about, combined, four hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. But we're talking about one thousand eight hundred and forty-six different items for an average cost of two hundred and thirty-two dollars. We're not using these cards for big dollar items. I mean, there might be a couple of instances, particularly the utility, when they have to go out and use it for something. Obviously, the plant and its parts are very, very expensive. But overall, on average, we're talking about small dollar purchases here, not large purchases. If you take that eighteen hundred and forty-six purchases and apply that, just looking at checks, forget the time that we talked about, but just looking at checks, at two dollars and seventy-eight cents a check, you're talking about five thousand one hundred dollars' worth of cost in just issuing the checks for those items versus twenty-four cents for doing it on a pro card. Again, eight cents per month for three months. Significant difference. And then you annualize that, you're talking twenty thousand dollars a year for checks versus about a dollar a year for the electronic payments that we do. And even if you want to be conservative and say, well, there could be group payments or some electronic payments for the other, cut it in half, fifty percent. Go conservative. You're still talking about ten thousand versus a dollar. Quite a difference. Security. So when you talk about GAAP accounting principles, when it comes to procuring goods, you really want to do what they call a three-way match. You've got your front end, your purchase order, you've got the invoice for the item, and then you've got the good itself. You want to make sure everything matches, and people should be reviewing these on all ends, from beginning to end. And it really shouldn't be the same person. That's one of the things that got folks up in Dixon in trouble and gets a lot of other smaller communities in particular in trouble, because they just don't have the staff and the departments to do this with different individuals. We do, and we absolutely do that. So I'll spare you the details here. This is what it looks like without a pro card, and this is what it looks like with a pro card. The point is, in both instances, there are a lot of eyes looking at these purchases. A lot of different departments, divisions are looking at these through all phases of the process. So we have significant, substantial, and certainly the type of internal controls that we need and should have. In fact, our auditors have often said that they're impressed with the level of internal controls that we have when it comes to the procurement of goods. So we think that it's certainly sufficient, whether we use pro cards or not. I'm having trouble with my clicker here. There we go. Accounting restrictions. Okay, so users are assigned specific cards, and the names are on the cards. They are accountable for anything that is purchased on that card. You're not relying on the vendor that we purchase from having their security protocols or their training of their staff. For instance, if we have an account set up at a hardware store locally, what is to say that somebody couldn't come in and say, we've got a city of Springfield account, I'm purchasing this item, just put it on there, they sign a name that's illegible, excuse me, trying to say that? What is to stop that from happening? You are relying on the vendor to make sure that that person is who they say they are and that they represent the city of Springfield. That may not happen. With a card, we don't have to worry about that, because not only do we have that person tied to that card, we also have the backing and security of the card company itself. And of course, we have embedded limitations as well. You have per-cost, per-item transactions. A lot of folks, everybody has restriction. And it's different depending on the individual. Obviously, a manager at the utility might need to go out and get a higher-priced item than another one. Say, somebody, Ron, in our facilities, maybe his is five hundred, maybe the other has a thousand. But everybody has a limit, a restriction. It's not just a per-item restriction, it's a per-month restriction. And if they want to exceed that restriction, they need to come back to us and ask for it in writing. And then we can allow them to do that by going into the system and making a one-time exception. There's even geographical restrictions. We had a situation where the utility wanted to purchase an item that was out of Canada not that long ago, and their card would not allow them to do that, because that is something that we have. They had to come to us and ask for it. Now, eventually, they were able to find something somewhere else that was refurbished, I think, and didn't need it. But again, having those restrictions, it forces people to be a little more accountable, look a little bit harder, and that's exactly what happened. It worked as expected. This is on the previous page, but it bears repeating. Every day, these purchasing logs, or virtually every day, these purchasing logs are coming into the purchasing department, and they are being reviewed by the purchasing staff almost every single day. There is ongoing and constant review of these purchases that are going on almost every single day. So there certainly is a lot of scrutiny that goes along with these pro cards. It's not as if somebody's just using them, a big bill comes in and we pay it. It doesn't work that way. We have to, the department directors or their designees even have to sign off on these purchase logs. And certainly, we can get you a copy if you want to see one. I think we've sent them four, and certainly can do it again. So there is a lot of scrutiny up and down the ladder for these pro cards. It's not something that we take lightly, I promise you that. And then flexibility. A pro card, it is what it is. I mean, everybody, this is the way of the world now. Everybody's taking electronic payments, and having a pro card allows you maximum flexibility. If you want to go out and comparison shop on price, which of course, right now, is very important, given our budgetary situation, we encourage people to do that. Take North Dirksen, for example. You've got four or five hardware stores right there that are all in the city, and maybe one item is five, ten, twenty dollars less or on sale at one hardware store. Well, if we have an account in only one of those, they've got to go there no matter what, and they may pay more. Or it could be a situation where they go to that store and the thing is not there that they really, really need. Or with a pro card, they can go across the street or down the street and get the item that's not out of stock. If they don't have an account and we don't have any relationship there, they can't do that, and that just adds time, when time could be of the essence. And in many situations, it is, certainly at the utility. Okay. So I mentioned earlier that pro cards are actually a GFOA best practice, and I have an excerpt on the side there. You don't need to read that, simply because I've attached a much bigger version to the end. But if you look, you'll see that there are a lot of benefits, numerous benefits, to cardholders, governments, and vendors. They're all listed right there. That's why this is a best practice, and it's the reason why we use it. If you look at those, every one of those benefits, that's exactly why we use these pro cards. It's exactly why they are absolutely the way to go, irrespective of the cost savings. And again, we want to continue to do that, and certainly, if you have any issues, we're happy to address that. But in the end, I guess what I want to say is, when it comes down to pro cards, it's not the card, it's not the process that there are issues with. There might be issues with items that are purchased on the card, and that's certainly something we're working to address and can address anytime there are concerns from the council. But the cards themselves, they save the city money, they save time, they're a lot more flexible. And quite honestly, they're utilized by vendors and preferred by vendors in most instances. So it makes perfect sense, there's really no reason for us to go away from that process and to add a bunch of time and money and cost into the little hundred, two-hundred-dollar items that we have to purchase. And as you saw from the earlier slides, there's a lot of that. Think about it all the time, and especially now when we are down staff. I had a conversation with someone who had to use a pro card. They had to take twenty minutes to go across town and pick up an item that I think was like ten dollars. And, you know, sometimes that you have to think about what makes the most sense in terms of allocating the time and the cost. And we did send out something, I think you'll be happy to know, about local purchases. And I think, this is how I'm going to end the presentation, but I think this is really what a lot of the concern comes down to. Are we using a pro card? Does it make it too easy to go out and just buy something online? Or to ignore your responsibility to cost shop? Does it make it too easy to do that? And one of the things that we have recently put out is we have sent a, the department at the bequest of the mayor has sent to the department heads that their first option needs to be go out and look for these items locally. And what we've done is our pro card report now has been updated, and that's what this slide is here. You can see what's in yellow. We're now having the logs pull in from the database, a phone number if it's there, and a location, or at least a general location, it might just be a state, it's whatever is available, pull in that location into the report, so that that's now visible. And there's a comment section that is now new at the bottom, and the directive has been, if you do not purchase the item locally, you need to insert a comment as to why. At the end of the day, we're looking for more accountability from the people that use the cards. It's not the cards, it's not the process, it's the people. And we're working to try and assuage the current concerns of the council when it comes to purchasing local versus purchasing outside of the city or the county or even the state. So in summary, pro cards are a lot more economical, they offer more flexibility, they have a high degree of security, and they are a GFOA best practice. Pretty much everybody uses them now. I don't know of any community or any government, quite frankly, that doesn't use credit cards or pro cards in their day-to-day operations. So if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Otherwise.
Alderman Redpath.
Thank you, Director. I think there might be a little confusion on the difference between the pro cards and going back to the checking. I know that when the mayor and I had a little discussion a couple of weeks ago, he said, well, maybe we'll go back to the checkbooks. I think we, I don't think that was the intent. We know that it's essential for us to use the pro cards. This is about spending. We're all nervous. Everybody sitting in this horseshoe, mayor included, are all concerned about our spending practices. We have challenged a couple of areas where there was some spending that we didn't think was necessary. I can tell by your presentation, what you just said, that things are starting to change. And I can tell you that the things you just said about the mayor saying, go out and purchase local, now I can listen to the radio commercial and say, good job, Jim. So the bottom line is, is that because we had discussions, and sometimes heated discussions about the spending that we have here, things are changing, and it has to. We have to do our best to drive, buy local. We have to do our best not to go out and purchase online when we can do that here. So tell me now, what's the breakdown of how much of those, how much do we spend with the pro cards in Springfield versus out of Springfield?
Well, we would have to try and run reports on that. We don't have that data readily available. It wasn't something that we necessarily tracked before, but we are looking at it now, obviously.
And we all are cognizant of the fact that the sales tax is dropping, and it's scary to think that we're going to have another major deficit at the end of this year. That's why we're looking at this. When there's unnecessary spending, and then it falls back down to the supervisors. Are they really watching this stuff? And then does it ultimately come back to you? Is that where it all comes back to?
Yeah, ultimately, OBM is in charge of the pro cards and the purchasing policies of the city. So that's one of the reasons that we emphasize so much that there has to be diligent screening of the expenditures and spending on these pro cards. And quite honestly, there is a lot, or are a lot of internal controls that are built in. And the department directors, I can tell you, I can't speak for every department, I don't know who the designees are, but I can tell you, in my department, the pro cards that we have, and we have two, I look at every one of those expenditures individually. I check them off as I go down the list. I would hope that's to the degree of scrutiny that we're getting out there in all the departments.
So you, as the leader of this whole thing, do you call the directors of the departments and say, are you scrutinizing? Is there questionable purchases being made down there? Are you doing that?
I'm not calling them, but I am emailing all of them. In fact, I just sent one out just a week or two ago on this very issue.
And I can tell by your presentation, again, that things are changing, that there is monitoring, there is scrutiny, there is local purchases going on. So for that, I say, good job, and to keep going forward with that, because we have to make sure we do our best to cut every dime we can, because we got a major hit coming. Thank you.
Alderman Donlin, then Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director, for the presentation. I echo Alderman Redpath's comments about the new procedure regarding local purchases. I like the idea also of, if it's not purchased locally, putting in the comments, why? I think that's really good to hear, Director. You know, while you were talking, I thought of a couple of questions I didn't anticipate asking, but I did want to, I did want to ask kind of a, because I just don't know, a simple question. How many cards do we have? How many procurement cards do employees have? How many are there told?
Hundred and five.
All right. And what, and I know there's very, you mentioned it, there's various limitations as far as what the limits are per person. What's the minimum? I mean, is it a hundred dollars, five thousand dollars?
Are you asking a minimum?
Per card.
Item or per card per month?
Per card per month. I mean, just, ballpark is what I'm looking for.
We have cards that range from about five hundred dollars monthly up to about ten thousand, depending upon what position they're in. Lisa Dudley out of the power plant may have a ten thousand dollar limit, where someone else like a Lee Hubbell painter may have five hundred to go buy paints.
Sure. And then, thank you. As you were talking, I understand the need for a card, especially in emergency situations. And correct me if I'm wrong, but the city is, when we purchase something, we don't pay sales tax. Am I correct?
Correct.
So if we have a relationship with an existing vendor, it's pretty clear that the sales tax isn't going to be, it's going to basically not be charged.
Right.
But when an employee purchases something online, or has an emergency, or something is unavailable at a local vendor, and they go to another vendor and they purchase it, are we making sure that the sales tax is not being paid?
There's a couple of instances where that has happened, and we've tried to address that. But in most cases, we have letters that we send with people that show that we are sales tax exempt. And a lot of stores around here that people frequent, they know that by now. And they have, some of them even have our letters on file, and you just have to do it once a year. And so it's usually not a problem. I'm not going to sit here and tell you that sometimes it doesn't slip through, but it's a rarity when that happens. Do you want to add?
And when we check, we check them in purchasing, that's what we talked about the daily. We go through, and if they have taxes, even if it's forty cents, sometime we will either tell them about it or depend upon the price, we will have them go recover it. There's been instances where employees actually gave us the money for it to reimburse us, because they didn't do it and they've been repeated. So it is something we check.
And they're not, they know they're supposed to do it.
Right. Well, that's, it sounds like the check and balance is in place, but what do you do about online purchases?
Those are actually the easier ones to get, because they don't have to go to the store, so it's no hassle.
Because most of the time, most of the time, taxes aren't being charged at all, right? That's part of the problem. That's part of the problem.
Right. We're not supposed to. So we, every time we see tax, we will tell the person about it, and we will ask them to recover, and make every effort to. And we will continue to ask them until they don't. And if they do not recover, we put a note in there, in the system, and in their file, so we know if it comes up again, they can, we hold them responsible and ask them to pay it.
I know. Can you just, for their benefit, tell them how often you come across a purchase that might have tax?
Out of the 500 we have a month, we may see a couple with taxes. It's rare, because they know they are not supposed to, and because we stay on them about recovering them, it's something they don't have, want to have to deal with us about.
Thank you. Glad to hear it.
One of the things we look at in the review process.
Thank you.
Alderman Hennar.
Thank you, Mayor. The problem, and I don't have a problem with the cards. I realize that they are beneficial. I mean, but what I have a problem with is, okay, let's look at the guy that goes to the paint, to get paint, right? He does it a lot. Why don't we have a master contract, you know, to go out and see where we can get the best deal on paint? We don't do that. What about office supplies? On there, I saw tons of office supplies. We found out that they were buying computers, and they weren't using state contract. My point on this is, anything that we, I see repeat stuff on these, on boots. Well, if we know we're going to have 10,000 pairs of boots, or 500 pairs of boots, why don't we have a contract to try to get the best value? That's what it's about. When you're using this, and you're buying one, you know, you're, every week, you're buying one, you know, 100 items or something, it's, you know, whatever it is. My point is, we got to get the best value. And I don't think we're, I don't think this is providing that. I think that, number one, we need to look at what state contracts we can pair up to. Because I can tell you, the state, their margins that they provide are very, very low. And we should be going off that. Anything that we're separate from, we should be going out, and we should be having, and getting master contracts. Now, I realize that your office is limited right now, and we understand it, but it, but that's good business practice. That's good government practice, and we currently, we don't do that.
That's not necessarily the case with everything. Now, there's a couple of things. One, when it comes to the types of items, and I'm going to use computers as an example. Now, my understanding is, of course, ISD, there are subject matter experts when it comes to computers. So if they want to go a certain direction for consistency's sake, or whatever reason, then we generally allow them to do that. Now, I'm not in a position, Cassandra's not in a position to go to John West and say, we don't think you should buy Dell's, we think you should go off the state contract and get, what, Hewlett-Packard's, or whatever it is. We're not in a position to do that.
At over 60% less cost.
And I don't disagree with you from a cost standpoint, but when we're talking about items such as computers and all that, I need to defer to the subject matter experts. Now, this is a situation where concerns like this can certainly be brought to us, or directly to the departments, and we'd be happy to answer the questions associated with that. But I'm not in a position to say to John West, you shouldn't be buying these computers. He's the subject matter expert. My job is to make sure that he has the ability to buy those computers, and to make sure that the city can operate day-to-day. So there's that. And then, you know, the issue is, we actually do have some master contracts, and we have found, and I'm going to use office supplies as a prime example, because you mentioned it, we have a master contract for office supplies. It's less expensive to go to some of our local stores and buy the items than it is to use that master contract. And so there are many instances, certainly when it comes to office supplies, as a prime example, and I'm sure you see those over and over again, I will tell you, it is less expensive just to take the Pro Card to a local store, whether it's an office store or whatever, but a local entity, and to buy those with the Pro Card versus getting it off of that master office supply contract that we have.
Are we using a state master on office supplies?
I don't know what our current is.
On office supplies?
Don't say the vendor, but is it a state contract, or was it a RFP-type bid?
I don't think office, actual office supplies, pens, papers, things like that, we don't have a contract for that. For office supplies, they are actually required to get quotes. So we go with the lowest quote on anything that we get. Any of our purchases follow the standard procedure, where you have to get three quotes, or three bids, and be the lowest to be able to procure them. We have janitorial supplies contract, that's the one that we have where we bid out, and everything has to go through that. Anything that we have a master agreement on, you will not see on Pro Card, they're prohibited to pay for those purchases on Pro Card. So you won't ever see those items.
Well, I just, I think that we need to look at that, especially, I will tell you, on computers, and obviously...
That's a high-dollar item, I understand your concern.
I was 32 years in the business, so I know. You open up a Dell computer, you open up an HP computer, you know what, you got the same components, probably made in the same town. So, and at 60% of the cost, I'm sorry, but we need to rethink that, and I got to relook at that, but...
And that might be a situation where perhaps John, and you, and myself, maybe Bonnie, or somebody from the mayor's office could just sit down and talk about it, because...
I think it comes down to the networking of the system, and so, you know, John West would be the most appropriate. But with regards to the state contract, I think what we could do is do a comparison. I think we used to do that at the treasurer's office when we'd get the bids, but then you compare it to the state contract and see what's the true low price, and then go with that. So if the state contract was lower, you'd go that direction. If not, through the bid. If the bid price was lower, then you'd go that direction.
Mayor, I will say that on the computer side, there's certain things that you don't want to mix up, but computers are not a problem. They work on the network no matter what, especially nowadays, so...
That's why we need John West. I mean, we're trying to do GIS, I mean, there's a, it's complicated. The treasurer can tell you with the ARIA system. I mean, that's been in the process for a long time. And so that's why we want to make sure it's integrated appropriately. If Hewlett-Packard can, you know, do that the same way, then, but we have to leave it up to ISD, the experts, because they customize the development of those programs that integrates all our systems, and that's what we're trying to do, is a centralized database. We're doing city work, so it really, it's just not the, you know, putting a computer out there, it's really the integration of all that. And they've been at it, it's all our programs, so we're going to have him come and give a presentation, or just like Director McCarthy said, just have a small group, talk about it, the pros and cons of doing it, and what makes sense.
Be happy to do that.
Happy to do that. And I do know that in the past, when we, because I've asked a question, I mean, you know me, I'm looking for the least amount of money we can spend on anything. And I think one of the things they talked about was there something about the warranty or something like that as well. But again, we can be happy to facilitate a meeting if you're so inclined.
Couple other things, and I'll give, the other thing I saw, where we provide a lot of safety incentives, gift cards, things like that. What checks and balances are made, sure that those gift cards, we buy 20 gift cards, and all 20 are given out, and, you know, or some aren't lost, or what have you? How do we?
I can double-check that, and maybe you know.
Oh, I know. Yeah, everyone signs off on them.
They sign off on everyone?
They have a sheet, every name, and everyone has to sign off when they receive their gift card.
And that's on the utility side?
Yep.
It is, and it's attached to the Pro Card log, so it's always there to show who got it, and everyone signed off, and it's stated.
I don't disagree, because that was a major area of concern when I came here, and that started to proliferate, the use of those cards, and we wanted to make sure that there was a definite accounting of each and every card, and who it went to.
Right.
So there is a process.
If you could just touch on why those are given out?
To lower workers' compensation, essentially. We want to encourage our individuals to be safe, and one of the ways to do that is to incentivize them to be a little more safe, maybe a little more cautious, maybe a little more aware, because those gift cards can be theirs if they go so many days, so many weeks, and I believe it even escalates over time, to encourage that. And it's one of the many, many things that we've done to try and lower workers' compensation in the city. I know when I started, the previous three years, workers' compensation costs were somewhere around $5 million a year, and they're now down to around $2 million. We're on track to be less than $2 million this year, and they've been that way for the last several years. We've worked very, very hard to try and make this a much safer workplace, a safer place for all of our employees, both in the utility and out, and it's paying dividends, we're seeing it. So the cost of gift cards, while it can be something that is, people can be concerned about, and certainly I understand the perception, but it is absolutely paying dividends. It's one of the tools we're using.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath.
Bill, are we required by certain contracts to buy certain persons, certain things like boots and stuff? I know that we do buy boots for a lot of the labor folks. Is there a specific, is it specific on what brands they have to buy? I know, like, red wing boots or something?
Right, right. I think it's maybe dependent contract to contract. I can only speak from the fleet contract, where we're required to provide steel-toed boots for the shop, but I do not believe that we specify a specific. In fact, now that you mention it, I know that a lot of our individuals, we are required to provide bib overalls as well. And a lot of our individuals prefer Carhartt. We don't necessarily go that route, because we can find pretty good bib overalls that aren't Carhartt, that are more cost-effective.
Obviously, we want to make sure that they have the best equipment that they can have, but I just wanted to, you know, that's kind of confusing to some folks, that, but people get a new pair of boots every year, and some of them have, I mean, if they need them, they need them. In the military, what we did was, when your boots wear out, you go get a new pair of boots. You don't automatically get new pants, or new boots, or something. So it makes it more efficient to the fact that, hey, my boots are worn out, I need another pair. Turn in your old boots, I'll give you the new boots.
That's what we do in fleet, I can't speak for the other contracts.
And it's just, it's just a matter, it's not a matter of not making sure they have the right equipment, because that's not what I'm trying to get to. It's the point that it's, are we, is it too, are we giving too much out? I mean, are we not providing enough? Okay?
Right.
So, you know, I'm not trying to say that. And, yeah, Carhartt's nice, but there is brands that are...
Right. They're just as good, yeah.
Yeah, so...
Yeah, we'll ask the utility, John Davis, to come up with the, what attire's required, usually per the union contract, and then also, you know, if there's the opportunity to buy in gross, we'll have them take a look at that, maybe they're doing it right now.
I think we do purchase those boots locally, don't we?
Again, I can't speak for other places. I know we do.
We have certain contracts that do require Carhartt, they name Carhartt as the brand that we have to buy. As far as boots, we have a list of boots that are accepted, you know, because of the, you know, the steel shank, the steel toe, other safety qualities that we're looking for, but there's a variety of stores that sell those. So a lot of the people like to go to, and try them on at Red Wing, because they can put them on and make sure they fit, but, you know, they'll order them online, or through catalogs also.
So we do, we have a contract set up with them, that our guys can go in and try them on, and that kind of thing?
With Red Wing. Obviously, we have a contract set up with them, but we do have...
Hey, alls I'm glad about is you're buying them local, I don't care what kind they get, you know.
And what else did you ask, Mayor? A lot of them like to try their stuff on, so that's sort of...
I think that's what we need to check. If it's Red Wing, we should get a, you know, we should have the local Red Wing ship them here, and then go that direction.
And I think you do, don't you?
We do. A majority of the shoes are purchased from what, Red Wing? They have to take in a form, they get a form to fill out. They typically purchase them on Pro Card, attach everything with it, and it's submitted. No tax, anything like that. But a majority of them that you see through Pro Card are going to come from Red Wing.
Red Wing.
There are the occasional ones that are not. Typically, those are a little cheaper, though, when they, I think workingpersons.com is the other one that I typically see, but probably at least three-fourths, if not more, come from Red Wing.
Again, we want them to have the best equipment that they need, and we just want to do it as efficiently as possible.
You can appreciate, Alderman, a quick story. We had someone in fleet who wanted new, said that their bids were worn out, and wanted new ones, and fleet manager's response looked at them and said, those are fine, just wash them. And he washed them, and they turned out just fine. So he did not get new bids.
Thanks.
We watch every dime.
All right. That's the point, Bill, that's...
Are there any other questions or discussion?
All right.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 5, 2018 City Council meeting, and approve the minutes.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this city council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place consent agenda on final passage.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, for discussion purposes, please place 2018-279 on the debate agenda. It's an ordinance having to do with animal control.
Any other discussion? So with the exception of 2018-279, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435...
Got a vote on it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yep. So the chair will entertain a motion to place consent agenda on final passage.
Go move.
Been moved in second, any other discussion? All those in favor of the consent agenda, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the consent agenda passes, 10 voting yes, none voting no, with exception of 2018-279, which will be on the debate agenda. Agenda number 2017-103, 2017-266, 2017-435, 2017-436, 2017-470, 2017-489, 2018-005, 2018-110, and 2018-141 remain tabled or in committee. Next item on the agenda is numbered...
I believe that is, that at your request, we need to move 2018-247 to the debate agenda?
Just go ahead and...
Leave it for committee next week?
Yes.
Yeah, there's some amendments for that.
Whatever the questions are.
So we'll make the amendments to it, and then bring it back, when they're written out.
It'd be easier that way. Make sure we have it right.
I appreciate it. Next item on the agenda is 2018-273, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement for the property located at 2833 East Cook Street. The chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council for the purposes of a public hearing regarding agenda number 2018-273.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the city council regarding this annexation agreement? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? For the public, if anybody wanted to make a comment with regards to the annexation agreement for, regarding 2833 East Cook Street. No, at the end, for public comments on other items. Right. So any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye. Or no, we're voting, right?
To close, first it would be voice vote to.
This was reconvene.
Close, yeah, to adjourn the public hearing, reconvene.
Yep, reconvene the regular city council meeting.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-273 on final passage.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. Voting is now open.
Mr. Mayor, could we please go back to 2018-283? I'd like to pull that from the, from the committee and for a vote.
Okay, was that in the, or is that at?
It's in, it's in ordinances that remain in committee. You didn't get to that. I think you missed that page.
The ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. And what was that number, please?
It's 218-283. I'd like to pull that from the, from the committee for consideration for a vote.
Okay. Sir, second to pull 218, or 283? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now make a motion for, that we, for passage for 2018-283.
To take it out of order.
Let's see, yep. Well, let's go through the.
Do you want to take it off and put it on debate for discussion?
Yeah.
Debate, yeah. Okay.
That way it follows the regular process. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-274. An ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement for the property located at 600 Toronto Road, Kent Robbins LLC. Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the city council for the purpose of a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the city council regarding this annexation agreement? I would ask, Ron Metzger's here. I'd like you to come up, if you would, and, you know, tell everybody what you've done out at Toronto Road. If they haven't had the chance to stop by there, we would appreciate it.
I'd rather hear from Pat.
No. No doubt, no doubt.
Well, she can come up too.
Hi, I'm Ron Metzger, owner of Motorhead Bar Grill Museum, Route 66. What it is, it's not just like a bar, restaurant. It's a, like I call it a complex. We promote Springfield, Route 66. Everything about Springfield, Route 66, from signs, from the Bel Air to the Abe Lincoln motel signs. Everything in Springfield and really big on, I call them Motorhead for a reason because we have the world's fastest mile. We had the world's fastest quarter mile in Springfield Speedway. We've got many professional drivers and everything. So I'm really promoting all that. Like I say, it's a, it's a restaurant, bar, grill. And it's really a neat place. Everybody comes, has fun. It's amazing. The women like as much as the men, which is kind of, kind of a big deal. So we're just doing it for the city of Springfield and hopefully I make a little money along the way.
Hey, we appreciate all your works.
I went out and looked at it yesterday and it's amazing. Some of the historical stuff that he has in there, it'll show his marathon stuff, John. He picked up a lot of that stuff. And did you just buy that stuff along the way or?
Yeah, I can't stand for some of Springfield to get away. You know, so many old signs and part of history to the left. And every time I, I got an Abe Lincoln sign, I've got since 1996 when they tore down the Abe Lincoln and put up Cozy Dog. And I've carried that from spot to spot all these years and I finally got a place to hang it. And it's a 20-foot-long porcelain, you know, but as part of Springfield, it shouldn't have left. And Abe Signway, Dennis is doing the same thing.
And their bar is made out of photos of the past of Springfield. It's amazing. And I really encourage everyone to go out there and take a look at it. And it's going to be a successful place. And I know the Neighborhood Association supports that out there and we really look forward to you getting it going.
Yep, I appreciate that. You could all welcome to come out there and enjoy it. Like you said, the bar to all Springfield from 40 years ago. So.
Any other discussion? Very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-274 on final passage.
Go move.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. Voting is now open. The ordinance passes 11 voting yes, none voting no. Chair will entertain a motion for an ominous vote regarding agenda number, well, first. Yeah. Ominous vote regarding 2018-275 and 2018-276 regarding annexation of properties.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Ordinance number 2018-275. An ordinance annexing certain described properties located at 600 Toronto Road. And 2018-276. An ordinance annexing certain described properties located at 2833 East Cook Street. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2018-275 and 2018-276 on final passage.
Go move.
Second.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is coming open. We can do a roll call vote for 275 and 276 as an ominous vote, please.
Go do it.
Alderman Redpath?
Aye.
Alderman Señor?
Aye.
Alderman Turner?
Aye.
Alderman Philginsy?
Aye.
Alderman Proctor?
Aye.
Alderman DeCenso?
Aye.
Alderman McMiniman?
Aye.
Alderman Tylin?
Aye.
Alderman Donilon?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
10 ayes and no nays.
Thank you very much. Motion carries. 10 voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2018-279. An ordinance authorizing intergovernmental cooperation agreements with Sangamon County, Illinois Board of Health for animal control officer services for an amount not to exceed $124,928. And for boarding of animals impounded within the city limits for an amount not to exceed $138,049.67. And for a total amount not to exceed $262,949.95 from March 1, 2018 through February 28, 2019 for the Office of Budget and Management. Chair will entertain a motion.
Second.
Been moved in second. For approval, discussion? I did ask Jim Stone to come here from Public Health. If you'd like to come forward, we'd appreciate it.
Mayor, if I may, since I placed it out for discussion. And we have no issue but to pass this tonight, Director Stone. So don't worry. I don't think you'd be worried anyways. But I just want to talk about a growing problem that we have in Springfield and what the animal control and Department of Health might be able to do about it. In my seven years on the council, I've never had so many calls regarding coyotes. I'm getting calls from areas that never had coyote problem. More remote from the large parks like Washington Park and remote from our golf courses. They tend to take place during the winter time. I had some calls regarding coyotes near schools. Marsh School in particular. I had one call, Chris, just north of your part of Belle Reve along Route 4. And in that particular case, it was a situation where a coyote mother had started den. And I think it was in the backyard of some snowbirds, you know, a couple that were down in Florida for the winter. And the mother coyote was, you know, had a slaughterhouse going on in the back of that yard. And the mother next door with children, you know, was concerned about the coyote presence. And it became a pack of coyotes. And so, you know, historically, our contract with animal control does not address the problem of coyotes. But I think we need to. It's a growing urban problem. I see reports about it in other cities and so forth. And so we need the assistance of animal control and we need some advice on what do you recommend for an urban area like Springfield where we've got a growing coyote problem? It would only take one diseased coyote, you know, to really act viciously and so forth. But it's a growing problem and so we need some help. And, you know, animal control is a logical place to seek help from. I know that at the federal level, there's some resources there. But really, you're the local presence. And so, you know, if we can get some local help, it would be greatly appreciated.
Well, I know we had a communication with the Alderman Coordinator, Tim Griffin, last November about this. And we recommended, actually, and offered to do an introduction to have USDA Wildlife Services come out. Provide an assessment for problem areas. And they're the experts in this because, yes, we're animal control and, yes, we get the pot-bellied pig from now and then and we get the, you know, different kinds of snakes and other things that come through. But it's typically dogs and cats, bats sometimes as well. But there are raptors that we're not even licensed to touch ourselves through federal law and regulation. So we're more the domestic animal control, if you will. Wildlife situations like this, we need to get professionals involved. And again, I would offer to broker a meeting or bring USDA Wildlife Services to sit down and discuss problem areas and see what their advice might be.
Alderman DeCenso?
DNR, I've worked at DNR for nine years and they have programs too about urban wildlife. Alderman Redpath and I worked there at the same time. So this is a, this is a growing problem. And they have tips to help you, you know, with your domestic animals and not get caught up in these situations. But we're taking up their space, so.
Well, and that's true. As we expand and coyotes and, for those of you who know much about this kind of wildlife, they are very adaptable. As, as the city limits expand, I mean, we have them even in Sherman. I've had them come up within two feet of our fenced in backyard. So it is something that maybe a public education piece to this would be important. Helping residents to know what to try to avoid, to make sure that they don't have harborage or any kind of allure for these kinds of wildlife. So anything like that we can do to help, at least bring people to the table who are experts, we're more than happy to do.
Alderman Redpath and then Alderman Tylin and then Señor.
You know, Jim, it's, it has been an ongoing problem as Joe alluded to. And I know in my neighborhood, we, I sleep with my window open so I can, I hear the, one foot off my driveway, I'm in the county. So there's cornfield next to me and I hear them all night. And so there were some problems in the, in the Timberlane area and the Timberlane East and Wanless over there. We had some problems. And they did trapping program. They hired a trapper to come out and they trapped a bunch of them. Got, they cut the population way down. And that's basically a lot, a lot of the way that happens. There are, there are trappers out there that will go out and take care of a lot of the problems. And like Kristen said, there are programs at DNR. They will come out. Conservation Police will come out and advise you on how to handle that. So that's probably the avenue that we probably should take. And yes, animal control is domestic, domestic animals and that type of thing, so.
And Chuck, I'm sure you probably know too, that kind of trapping they do, it's kind of specialized. Coyotes are really easy to trap. And I think that's probably a trap and relocate program as well too, so it's.
And the thing is, is that it's a situation when you've got young children around. You want to be careful how you do any kind of trapping, obviously. And you got to let professionals do that so they don't, they do post the area that they're trapping in. They posted all around the area where they were trapping just to make sure that the parents knew and the kids knew and everybody stayed out of the area while they were trying to trap those things. So that's really the, really the avenue to go, so.
That's a good point.
Alderman Tylin?
Jim, obviously, I'm one of the Aldermen that's on the Public Health Board. So we've discussed this at that board as well. And I think what it comes down to for me is that in our area, in Ward 8, and I know Ward 7 and 6 are right alongside, we have been surrounded. We're in the city. And areas that are wooded, such as over off Lismir Lane, Blackberry Run, over off of Chatham Road, the Griffin Woods, Washington Park especially. These areas have been surrounded. And as you said, these animals are extremely adaptable. There have been some situations of pets going missing. There have been some situations of, I personally saw a coyote in my neighbor's backyard 30 yards away from me. The problem is, is that when people call, animal control rightly says that they aren't the ones who can handle it. Springfield PD can't handle it because it's wild animal. You go to DNR and then whoever it is that's a public number that they're getting off the website, that guy at DNR, nine times out of 10, is saying they can't handle it either. So if you can bring someone to the table who can provide a phone number that we can post, that we can say, this is where you need to go when you've got a wildlife issue. In my 11 years as an Alderman, I've had twice now where there's been a deer that was stuck in somebody's fence in their backyard. And we had to go through animal control to then go to DNR, to then go to whoever it was who really did come in and take care of the wild animal. And I think if we could streamline that process and make it something that's very clear to our constituents and our residents that they know where to call, I think that would be extremely helpful.
Sure. And I think in mentioning DNR, we would want to have them at the table as well. To make sure we have all, you know, federal, state and local resources available so that people get an answer.
I mean, honestly, I would almost say if they could come to a city council or to a committee and be here as you are right now to answer questions and hand out materials or whatever else and get information to the city communications department for, to post on the website, I think that would be fantastic.
I think we could do that. And might I suggest that maybe we have a little bit of like a work group? And Mayor, I don't know if you would want to have an Alderman or two wish to be part of that work group? We could sit down and address this. I'd want to get Greg Large and our Director of Operations involved as well. And then maybe we could come back to this committee or this council and give a report.
Good. Alderman Señor and then DeCenso and then Turner.
Yeah, Mr. Stone, thanks for coming. Good to see you again.
You too.
It's been a while. Can we make this to include other animals also? Because not just the coyotes, but I mean, there's opossums, there's muskrats and especially in rhinoceroses, skunks. There's a lot of.
Foxes.
Animals that are not coyotes that are roaming around in the neighborhoods. And if we could get a discussion as to what's available, what you can do and what you can't do. Because there's certain things I know that, you know, who can set the trap and how the, you know, and just any information that's available to the citizens that we can put out to them would be very helpful, I think. Because we're having a problem in our neighborhood with those animals that I just mentioned because there's one presently that's took up residence under my deck. The hole's about three foot long and the mound's about two foot high dirt, so.
Sure. Yeah, we could take a look at various wildlife that are most prevalent within the city and kind of take a tiered approach to that too. I think the coyotes are the ones we're getting the most calls on right now, but we most certainly can include those as well.
Very good. Thank you.
Alderman DeCenso?
I've expressed this to you and Mr. Large before, the after-hours and weekend calls. And, you know, I continue to face problems with those, with my constituents. So it's just tough for me to look at these numbers and say, you know, it's okay to pay the Department of Public Health this amount of money when I feel like there is, their after-hours and weekends are underserviced. So that's just, that's an ongoing concern of mine. And I just, I don't know what the answer is, but I think it needs to be addressed somehow.
Well, I know we had a discussion through email back in April.
Yes.
And I think we asked for some specific examples. I'm not sure that we got necessarily so many of those.
Yes, Mr. Large and I spoke.
In, in any event, we are on duty from 8 to 6:30, Monday through Saturday. We do have on-call officers after hours for anything that's not on regular duty. We do operate after hours if we have police requests and police are on the scene and need assistance. If we have public safety on scene and need assistance, fire, rescue squad, something of that nature. We have a public safety issue, large alum or something that's obstructing roadway that's going to cause a traffic hazard. We go ahead and come out for that as well. If we have somebody who has a bat in their home, and I'm not sure, it's a good teaching moment for me to let you know that if you wake up and a bat has been in your sleeping area within your home, that is considered to be an exposure according to the CDC. So that's something we need to know. We also come out for that as well. Or if we have an animal that is exhibiting very strange behavior. It looks ill, vomiting, diarrhea, things of that nature, we would come out for that as well too. So, and we do respond to dispatch and we have an on-call officer and we make those calls as necessary. As far as the services expanding, I mean, that's certainly something that at some point in time we could discuss with the city. That is your call. But if we expand, I'm sure there's going to be an additional cost associated with that. And I think this contract is roughly $25,000 less than last year's.
Correct.
And this contract is about $91,000 less than two years ago.
But it's my understanding when, when you took over these services, and I just learned this today, that there was no cost to the city.
No.
That's not true?
No, no, no. No, there's always been a contract associated.
For boarding?
Pardon me?
For boarding?
For boarding was added during the Mayor Dabbling administration.
I remember that one specifically.
Yes, exactly. Now, the first contract was actually $121,000, something like that, I'm not sure. But it was woefully under what the actual cost was because they actually moved somebody that was in animal control, an administrative position that ran about a $60,000, $70,000 salary into another department that wasn't included in the first contract. So it was a little deceptive, if you will.
Mr. Mayor?
They absorbed all the stuff we sent over too.
Yeah.
Alderman Turner?
The point I was going to raise, but to Alderman DeCenso's question, I was on the county board when it merged. And there was a lot of discussion because we really thought that, we really thought that it was going to cost a lot more to provide the services than what the contract actually called for. So the city really got a pretty good deal because the county was picking up a lot of those expenses. And we have seen a, a lot of sightings of, you know, coyotes, foxes, those kinds of things in Ward 3 as well, which you wouldn't expect because, you know, it's a more residential area and that hasn't happened. So I think that the work group is a really good idea. And then I was going to suggest to the mayor that when we do the next cycle of. to suggest to the mayor that when we do the next cycle of ward meetings, that we incorporate that piece into the ward meeting. I know, last year, Alderman Tyler and I had Animal Control come out to our ward meetings, which wasn't, that was a new addition. So I would suggest that you add that for all of the wards and specifically talk about these issues. Because a lot of what we're seeing in, you know, like Wards Two and Three is not, you know, the normal sightings of animals. I mean, we've been seeing the, the possums and those kinds of things forever. But when you look up and see a fox running down the street, that's a little different.
We're more than happy to do that, Mr. Mayor. And one other thing, too, according to the cost, just to make sure everybody knows, the county goes out about every three to five years and actually has a cost study done by a third party. And they come in and take a look at what it actually costs to provide a service. We want to make sure that we're assigning costs appropriately and all of our contracts associated with that identify and utilize those costs in that cost study.
Great. Alderman McMenmaughan.
Mr. Mayor, Director Stone, I'm glad you raised, last time, a few years ago, I called you Dr. Stone, and that was wrong.
That's all right. I didn't pay that much for my degree.
A few years ago, I took a close look and study at the animal control budget, both the revenue side and the cost side. I think it was fiscal year fifteen and fiscal year sixteen, I believe it was. And what I was, and it was $1.2 million of spending roughly. And what I was surprised to see and learn was that I couldn't find any appropriation of county money to animal control. I found our appropriation of city money to animal control, which I think the ordinance we're passing tonight is, how much is it in total?
Two sixty-two.
Two sixty-two. But I didn't find any appropriation of county taxes for animal control. And I understand, one of the points you make, Director Stone, is that quote, "There's in-kind contribution from the county by the umbrella organization, the Department of Health." But I didn't see any appropriation of tax money from the county, even though in the unincorporated areas of the county, animal control has a substantial activity. And if I'm incorrect about that statement, I'd like to know if I am, if not necessarily tonight. But go, please go back and study the budget. And if you can see a revenue item of taxes from the county, please send that to me. I'd like to see it.
Sure. To the level of service provided to the unincorporated Saguama County, that is probably the lowest of all of our jurisdictions, if you will. About eighty-five percent roughly of our services are provided to the city of Springfield. The large S of the remainder are all the other municipalities. And then we have some within the unincorporated areas of Saguama County, too.
You might be correct as far as calls for service, but when you look at the, I'd like to show you what I saw. And I saw for unincorporated county, levels of activity beyond any village or municipality other than Springfield. So, but I'd be happy to compare what I saw with what you think is there.
We can take a look at that, absolutely.
Alderman Donahue?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stone, do any of the other municipalities contribute?
Yes.
Which ones?
All of them.
All of them, do they?
Yes, we have contracts with all the other municipalities in Saguama County.
And as you're describing, the costs are based on the usage, essentially.
Right. And each one of those contracts is up with their respective fiscal years.
Any other discussion? I guess at this point, I'd ask for what alderman would like to serve on the committee. We can go up to three. Right? Any alderman would like to serve on the ad hoc committee work with?
I'll serve on it. I don't care. Jim and I played baseball together, didn't we?
Too long ago. Alderman Tyler, Repath, and McMenmaughan. Great. Thank you very much. And we'll follow up setting that.
Maybe you can just have, send me an email with their contact information. I believe I have it all anyhow. But, and then we can set something up.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you all.
All those in favor of the ordinance, or any other discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2018-280 Resolution Fixing a Time and Place for a Public Hearing on the Lumber Lane Tax Increment Redevelopment Plan and Project for the Office of Planning and Economic Development. Chair will entertain a motion, place Agenda Number 2018-280 on final passage. It moved in second. Any discussion?
Discussion. What are we trying to accomplish? What is this going to?
It's for a public hearing for the TIF designation for the LS development. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. The ordinance passes ten voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is 2018-282. An ordinance approving the appointment of Lucas Turner to the Springfield Housing Authority Board of Commissioners. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2018-282 on final passage. It moved in second. Discussion. He is here. So if you'd like to come forward, if you wouldn't mind, since you've been sitting all that time.
Hello. Nice to meet everybody. I see you guys on TV all the time. My name's Lucas Turner, and I've been here for about twenty years. No relation to Mrs. Doris Turner. I get that a lot. I've been in the concrete business for, well, not business, but as a cement mason for almost fifteen years. And I started off at the OPCMIA Local Eighteen, excuse me, with the local. Got the apprentice of the year, went through the program. Mark Winkler, my BA, he thought this might, this would be a good opportunity for me to try something new, to learn how city government works, and just kind of add another stepping stone to my career. I've worked for several of our local contractors here in Springfield. So I'm not well-known, but I've been around for a while. And I can maybe help be an asset to maybe the Springfield Housing Authority. A little nervous, but excited. I'm a hard worker, a fast learner, and a team player. So I think that would help being a part of Springfield Housing Authority.
We appreciate your interest. And your talent will be, really come in handy, especially with the projects that the Housing Authority has going forward. So thank you for your interest. Any discussion? All those in favor of the ordinance, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes and none voting no.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Nice meeting everybody.
Thanks for sticking it out. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is 2018-283. An ordinance authorizing an increase in the number of Class L liquor licenses by one for PPV, hospitality, doing business as comfort inn and suites located at 3675 South Sixth Street. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
It moved in second for approval. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Voting is now open. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, none voting no, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is number 2018-284. An ordinance authorizing execution of a deposit loan agreement with the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Museum, AL PLM, regarding the Lincoln family interment log collection. Bless you. The chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2018-284 on final passage.
I'd like to make a motion to return this to committee. I found out right before the meeting that the Board of Directors did not get a chance to review the changes and have asked to have time to see the document before we approve it.
Second. Moved in second. Any discussion? What, Corporal Council, you want to give an update of where we're at on that, if you would, please?
Well, yeah, just, just briefly, the, what, I guess without going into much detail, because we can talk about it in the committee. But the draft that is attached to the ordinance is one that reflects a first set of recommendations or suggestions from various people, both the state and people at the library or at the cemetery and so on. Then there was a meeting on Friday that had various persons there. And Amendment Number One reflects the latest set of changes.
Yes.
So it is my understanding that these reflect all changes that everybody has requested.
Well, Director Lillis can come forward if he'd like. But I think the two parts, one was the terminology of deposit.
Versus loan.
Right. And so that's why we added deposit loan agreement. And they were okay with that, I believe, right? And then the other one?
Yes, they were. However, it got changed on Friday. So it's been a moving target a little bit. So the, it is my understanding that the amendment does reflect what the state wants, comments from the meeting, which are a little different than what was talked about a couple of weeks ago.
As I understand it, well, good evening. First of all, let me preface what I'm, what I'm about to say with the fact that we are extremely grateful to the Abraham Lincoln Presidential Library and Director Allen Lowell for agreeing to take these documents and store them in a, in a safe environment. Nobody worried about these books for the last hundred, hundred and fifty years. And all of a sudden, it's become a big topic of discussion here lately. So, so I'm glad, I'm glad the mayor has undertaken the fact that we needed to preserve these books. What I understand from the meeting we had last Thursday, and there were a number of us involved in the meeting, was the term deposit was to be removed. And I understand that that term is still within the document. And I think that's what we all agreed to. Other than that, I know the five, it went from ten to five years. I know that signatories and everything was all straightened out. But I think one of the parties involved was very adamant about the fact that the, that they're not, these are loans. And we want to make sure that it remains clear to the library, to the city, to future mayors, to future cemetery directors, that these documents on, document or documents will be on loan.
But I think that's why we added loan. But if you want to, I guess, clarify deposit loan agreement, I guess. And I think what transpired is the, there's various, I guess, oversight with regards to documents associated with the cemetery. And the discussion was deposit versus loan. So I don't know if you want to, because the previous document said deposit agreement, right? And so we added the loan, so to cover the basis. But if, you know, so I guess that's the question. Because the state, this is a template that they've used. So I guess if you want to clarify anything with regards to that, because what's going to happen is, let's, let's play this out. So it goes back to the Oak Ridge Cemetery Board, and they say, mm, no, you got to take deposit out. And then it goes back to the state, and they say, we're not going to take it out. And so the cemetery board says, we're not going to prove it. And then it comes to us, what, do we have to, what is the governing body of these books? Because that's what, I mean, that's what we're hung up on is a word. And so that's why we added loan to that.
Well, Mayor, I believe, I believe Mr. Kelm, Mr. Kelm at our meeting, the attorney for the, for the library, agreed to take the word deposit out.
Oh, I hope he did. But I guess I didn't understand that. So that's good.
And again, the attorneys involved have indicated that the, the argument over the, it's a distinction without a difference. And however, it doesn't affect the status of the ownership of the documents. There's no, there's never been a contention by anybody that the city doesn't own the documents. The library understands it. And to put this a little bit in perspective, the attorney for the council for the library did mention, or the museum did mention to me, that this is the only instance where they've ever accepted a document that they don't own, or the foundation owns. So they're making what they consider to be a tremendous gesture, trying to accommodate the city. So the amendment is, reflects all the most recent set of discussions from that meeting and from the state, from, from the library. And it fully protects the city, as did the original agreement.
So let's just send it back to committee and let's just get this worked out.
It's, and I understand, I'm saying that, but the latest which you have in front of you is what was discussed last week.
Hope it comes out where everybody can be in agreement. And we'll discuss, if it doesn't, what happens then. Alderman Tyler?
I think what it comes down to is, and obviously it has nothing to do with the city of Springfield itself as an entity, or the Abraham Presidential Library Museum as an entity, because they've never had this before. But I think that historically, there were at least two instances of where there was a deposit with a museum. And the law under, and I'm not by any means an expert on museum law, but the, the way that it read to me was that the, the term deposit, if you do not remove it in a, before the ten years and one day period, then that deposit becomes their property. And I think that word is what's got everyone on their legal edge when it comes to the Board of Directors and their concern. And I did find two instances when I was searching for it of where property did revert over to the ownership of a museum due to a deposit. So I, I think that's the concern. No one's accusing anyone of anything. The library museum has been wonderful. The, Mr. Lillis, Mr. Staub, neither one has had anything bad to say about the discussions and the way things have gone with Mr. Little or Mr. Lowell. And I'm sure that we can get this worked out.
Yeah, and that's why we switched to a five-year agreement versus tens, with the terminology of renewals.
But to be clear, it's really a thirty-day agreement, because either party at any time can cancel it on thirty days' notice. So.
Alderman Haner?
Is there any? Is there any issue with withholding this for throwing it back to committee? Or is it, I mean, does it jeopardize the agreement at all, or?
I don't believe so.
The books, the books, the book is already at the library. They're holding it for us now.
And with all due respect to the, to the board members, I appreciate they, I think they should be able to look at it. But ultimately, like every other contract, it stops here where the, where the place where the makes the decision.
But we do have the existing contract on file until we do the amended. Correct?
Right, correct.
Alderman Senor?
I'm on.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So it's been moved in second and moved back to committee. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Very good. I think we got through it. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Alderman Tyler?
Director O'Hern, I think you've sat through the whole meeting. Briefly.
We all have.
If you could just mention, I know you have the summer reading programs going on, but there is also not just a program for kids, there's also one for adults.
Absolutely. So we actually are having two summer reading programs at the same time. It's kind of the same thing. Our theme is reading takes you everywhere. And so adults are eligible to kind of enter as well. Five hours of reading or five out of eight activities as well, that you can actually enter to win a gift card here as well. Of course, our main focus is youth, but we also have adults as well. So I hope all, to see you all there and to get you to come and sign up for our program. We already have, I think, eight-hundred-and-twenty individuals already signed up for it. So, and today we had a magician with a snowball the bunny as well. So you guys could have come to that as well. Adults, we're welcome. Focused on kids, of course. But, yeah. So it's actually for adults and kids as well. And we've had great participation, and we're hitting our numbers. So.
And I think the time we spend reading city ordinances can count.
I'll count it, yes.
The other thing that I wanted you to mention is that you do have a dedication happening coming up here soon. I want to give you the chance to, to talk about that.
Oh, Nancy Huntley dedication? That actually happened today at three o'clock. We had that happen. So it was wonderful. I would definitely invite you to come see the Nancy Huntley Computer Center, the plaque right next to it. It was a class being used. It was pretty full on there. People were learning about their cellphone. It was wonderful. We did the plaque dedication. She got pretty emotional. It was a wonderful moment. So we had some cake. It was delicious.
Hey, Will, you're doing a great job.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Alderman Fugensi?
I'm sorry. It's nothing to do with the library. I just wanted to mention that the Honor Flight is coming back tonight at?
Oh, ten o'clock. Yep.
Kind of nine-thirty or ten, something like that.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, if you would, we did meet with the Springfield Sports Hall of Fame. And you want to speak to that? Because that's a resolution that'll probably be coming before the council.
So, yeah, we're looking to actually put the Springfield Sports Hall of Fame on the third floor. It's the third floor, it's kind of by the SVC Sangamon Valley Collection up there, we think it's a great fit, and we're really looking forward to it, so it's going to be wrapped around kind of the U-shaped area between Sangamon Valley Collection and the, the Frey's Reading Room there, so it should be all around that U area, and there's plenty of room to expand as well, so we're definitely looking forward to that addition as well, it's a great fit, I think, with the library.
It'll be right next to the Sangamon Valley Collection, so give us the opportunity to have display cases, things of that nature, which make it more prominent than where it is currently.
Absolutely.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Alderman Turner.
This is kind of a difficult subject to broach, but I'm gonna do it, you know, due to some situations that have occurred inside and outside these chambers over the last couple of months, I think all of us are growing pretty weary, I know I am, and so I did some research, and confirmed that the municipal code addresses member disorderly conduct within the chamber in section 31.03, titled Rules Expulsion, and it says, "The city council shall determine its own rules of proceedings and punish its members for disorderly conduct, with the concurrence of two-thirds of the alderman elected, it may expel an alderman, but not a second time for the same offense." So I did some further research that confirmed that no such rules have currently been determined, so I asked council coordinator, council coordinator, to collaborate with Corporation Council to work toward that end, so I think that the pummelation of these rules will bode well for everyone and everyone's mental health. So I know that Tim has already reached out to Corporation Council, they've had some preliminary discussions, and I'm hopeful that we will have something that will come back to us in the next week or so, that we can all take a look at, and then decide how to move forward.
Alderman Tyler.
If no one has anything else on that subject, I'd like to ask Director Mahoney a question.
Well Alderman Turner, Alderman Proctor, and then Alderman Tyler then.
Okay, just real quick reminder, Paint the Streets is downtown Nissarri from noon to 7:00 P.M.
Great. Alderman Tyler.
Director, I've, and I'm sure the other aldermen are seeing the same things that I am, I know that you guys wrapped up your branch pickup, but they missed quite a bit. I turned one into you that you guys took care of, but just in my home neighborhood alone, there are, last night, I drove around for just a half an hour, and I counted over 15 piles of branches that are obvious that they've been there for a while, they're more browned, and, and the grass under it has died, and other things, it's not like it's a new pile. These are, this is a pile of branches that are six to nine feet wide, they've been there at least a month, I know that the, the other sections of the city, all across the city, have it, one of the big things that, when I first took office in 2007, Earth Smith was adamant that, number one, the burn ban had to be maintained in the city of Springfield for air quality for people with things like asthma and other breathing-related issues, but he said, as part of that, you need to make sure that we're still continuing to do the branch pickup and other things, to make sure that people aren't suffering from the lack of having the ability to burn, and I understand what we're doing with the financial constraints that we have, but for me, just in a 12 square, six-square-block area, I found 15 piles in a half an hour, that I would say were missed, so I, I just think that we might need to make one more sweep, and I understand that there are, there are areas where people love to cut their branches and put them out, and they're green every week, those aren't the ones I'm talking about, I'm talking about ones where the grass under it is completely dead, and it's obvious they've been there for a while.
All right, we'll look into it. If you could check, because of the recent storm, because I know there's additional branches, so. Yeah, we do. Think about a final sweep. Yeah, yeah, we do, and actually, you know, we, we don't like to, in these settings, sometimes even to publicize it, because what happens is exactly as you referenced, is everybody starts putting them back out, so we're trying to clean up what's left out there, and I will tell you the number of calls we got has went down significantly, now we just actually, as we were in here, got some pretty good winds, so it's probably going to mean that we're probably going to have to go back and at least sweep through once and grab everything that's out there, so.
Yeah, I saw that.
We're working, working through it and trying to take care of it.
They had 6,000 outages at, at 6 o'clock.
Yeah, Walmart was out on South Six, hey Mark, and that's, that's a big thing, too, as soon as they come through and pick them up, people just start putting them out like the next day, it's crazy.
Yeah, what we do, we created last year, it worked pretty well, is once we got to that point, storms aside, we have door hangers, and if we see them, we put them on there, and I will tell you, the majority of people were pretty receptive, they understood it, they weren't excited, but they, they'd look at it, and they, just what do I need to do? They responded, so.
And, and we do, obviously, I know Julie probably puts stuff out about the pickups and, and do we do other media, media things for that when the pickups are all going, I, I hear them, obviously, but.
Yeah, and Julie puts out our neighborhood news, it's pretty effective, it goes out to the neighborhood associations, as well as the social media and everything she's broadcasting out there.
It just makes me crazy when I drive by a house and the truck just went by the day before, and they, and they put them out.
And there's always this period where we are right now, as we kind of wean off, it, it's done, and we're trying to clean up what's left out there, and then, then it gets better, and then it's in the fall.
They're, they're doing a good job, it's, it's frustrating when, when people do it after the, the truck goes by, so.
Alderman Proctor.
Yeah, I think, just wanted to say thank you for working with Vinegar Hill, because I think Vinegar Hill neighborhoods, I think in that area, right about two weeks late, I think, hitting that quadrant of the city.
Yeah, that's probably right.
But I guess what the one thing I want to stress, I guess, is to ask your staff to, when people call in, that they communicate that the, the branch pickup for that area is still continuing, because I was almost in a text battle back and forth with the person, he was saying that the city staff was saying the branch pickup is done, and then I was telling him, no, you're, you're still yet to be hit, and then he called the staff again, and then staff said, no, they're done, so he got more frustrated, and, but then he ended up getting picked up that day, so.
Every day we try to work on staff communication in public, that's always, that's my point, so. Well, I understand, thanks. Alderman Senor.
First of all, I had a constituent that had the branches, and she called and got picked up, so I want to thank her, but also I had a guy that said he took his branches out to Evans', and they charged him $10, and while he was doing that, another guy came in, and he said they didn't charge him, so how do you rectify that situation?
I spoke probably to the same gentleman you're referencing, and I had a discussion actually with Evans Recycling, actually this, today about that.
Yes, sir.
Trying to get that corrected, so we, we remind them, the problem they run into oftentimes, they, they have individuals who come down, they're actually contractors, and try to get it in, sometimes I think they're a little bit overly aggressive, they're, generally, they're pretty good with the public, but I think that's what happened, but we're trying to get the bottom of that, and we'll get, get that individual reimbursed.
Very good, thank you.
Alderman Haner, then Alderman just sent some.
Another, and, and I, I'm frustrated, too, because all of a sudden, I started seeing branches going out, and there was, we were long gone, you know, we were long done out on the West End, but the, the other problem that I've, I've heard was on the leaf bag pickup, what was happening was, I guess it was Republic, they were not, if people put stickers on the bag, they wouldn't go back through and pick them, they wouldn't pick those up until the free was over, and it was frustrating people, which to me, if it's they're out there just pick them up.
I don't think, I need to send it to all you guys, but I think individually, I've talked to a few of you, tried to explain what happened.
Right, and I.
And it's not entirely Republic's fault, I think we have, myself had to take some blame for that, because what had happened is the way we set up, we were going to do two passes through, and it was scheduled, so you knew that's when your pickup was coming, for yard waste pickup, so what happened, say if Republic went by that first week, it's going to be a month before you came back, and like you're explaining, some people said, okay, I get that, but I'll put a sticker on it, can you pick it up? Well, they were telling them not during the free pickup, which has kind of been the standard approach, but the reason they do that, or have in the past, is because we're picking up every week and it didn't matter, and that's what the problem is, so that was a glitch in our approach, that will be corrected in the spring, it won't be a problem in the fall, because we pick up every week, so there's free pickup for six consecutive weeks there, but it's, well, we, we understand, we made a mistake, and we'll correct that.
The one thing, too, I saw an article about Peoria, Peoria's in a lot of the same boat that we're, we're in, as far as, they have a large item pickup where they cut it back to like once a year, twice a year, something like that, and they had the same problem where people were dumping their couches and everything out, and, and they had to go and tag them, so we're not alone, only ours is limbs, and theirs is, you know, couches and mattresses and things like that, so.
I actually talked to Deanna the other day, she's updating, we have a chart, and a lot of times we, we'd update it when we had a discussion on garbage, last time we had a garbage discussion, and what it does is does the comparables to other cities, your Peoria, Rockford, Champaign, she's in the process of updating that, it, it's kind of a challenge sometimes, it makes you compare apples to apples, but we'll, we'll give you guys that once we get it updated, it shows what other cities are doing with branches, we get calls often, last couple, two or three weeks ago, I got a call from Aurora, wanting to know how we did our, our yard waste collection, asked us some questions on branches, and they're in the same situation, they were looking at paring back, they, we talked, I talked to them a little bit in the past, and again, about the, where you rake it in the street and suck them up, and they strongly advised not to do that, and they're trying to pare that back, so, there's no perfect solution, but I think we're all in it together, so trying to work out different scenarios, so it's sometimes, if you don't have to reinvent the wheel, and you talk to somebody, we try to learn from that if we can, so, but once I get that chart updated, I'll share that with everybody. Thank you, Mark. Alderman Senor, and then Fulgenzi.
Kind of changing the subject, Director, I'm, I'm having a lot of trouble with graffiti, the biggest one is right across from our school at 15th and Laurel there, and it's something that the kids see every day when they get off the bus or go, and it's on private property, so it's not, I don't think we can, there's, there's steps that we have to go through, and there's also one at 16th and Growth, and 16th and Cornell, the whole sides of the garage just filled with graffiti, and then some of the words aren't too nice, so, you know, how, how can we address that in a more timely manner, because it's, I know it's been there two or three months at least.
I know, we, we probably will have to have some discussion with Corporation Council, they've been cited along there, there was a period there, it probably was, about two months ago now, and they went through and hit several of them, when it's on public right away, it's pretty easy, we can go, we clean it up, we send our, down at the sign shop, they go, they, they'll take care of it, but there, what we've done is cited it, a lot of times you cite people, they usually take care of it, in that situation, they're not doing that, so.
Right.
Let me check with housing, see where it is, my, my guess is it's been referred probably to legal, and they're probably not getting any response.
If you started a program under Jim's dad, I think that we'd go over, paint over that stuff a long time.
That's on private property, though, is the difference, yeah.
It's right at the end of 15th, where 15th runs into Laurel.
We also have a problem right there, there's a couple houses that continually put out garbage, and they're putting out, it's the street right, past aisles, they're leaving cap, their mattresses, stuff like that, we've cited that a number of times, and there's carts in the front yard, we've been going around with them on that as well, so.
Thank you.
Alderman Fulgenzi.
Yes, on the branch pickup, one of the things I heard from some of the constituents, they were very happy, because the people picking up the branches were actually raking up all, all the debris that was remaining, and they were doing a pretty good job.
The, the quality of the contractor we used to help us with the branch pickup was, was, we got very good reports on them, just like you're hearing there, and our biggest issue is, I think, that it took them a little longer, that's why there's a couple-week delay, it was the first time they'd really done it, so we're trying to work through that and make some adjustments if we use them again, so. Great. Any other questions for Director Mahoney? Thank you very much.
All right, thanks.
Done for now.
Any other new business come before the council? Couple, we did have the National Alliance of T-Bucket Group come, it's a, really a car that's modified or built on their own, and kudos to the Convention Visitors Bureau, they had said that is a great convention, and the other thing, they recognized the police force for following up with them, making sure everything was okay, so really appreciate their outreach with regards to that, and they were over at the Crown Plaza this past weekend. So, any individuals, Val, you want to come up? Val Yazle has something she wants to share with the group.
In recognition of our small businesses that make our city so great, I'd like to congratulate the 38 businesses who were nominated for the Chamber Small Business Person of the Year awards today, and also to congratulate those that were the recipients of the awards, those were Pam Moll Torres, who was, was voted as the Not-for-Profit Business Director, Tara Dablin Holcomb was for New and Emerging, Sean Lambert for Small Business, Doug and Mike Sutton for the Lifetime Award, and Val and Chris Butler for Civic Involvement. I just want to personally thank them for all they do for our community.
And the one is the executive director of the food bank, Pam Moll Torres, right?
Yes, food bank, yes.
And then Dablin, what's her company?
Willow City Farms.
Thank you, I remember Willow, that's his farm.
That's the goat yoga, right?
Right, yes it is.
You might have them on the Y block.
Lambert Pools.
Oh, Lambert Pools, okay.
Lambert Pools, and then Doug and Mike Sutton, of course, from Sutton's, and Val and Chris Butler from Butler Funeral Home.
They partnered with Mike in letting people down, right? Did he leave?
Yeah, he left.
He missed it.
He always says that.
Yeah, so I just wanted to recognize all of them.
Thank you very much. Any other individuals want to address the council? Would you like to come up?
Get to the mic first and give us your name and address.
To the mayor and to the city council, my name is, I'm glad to be here, my name is Leonard Hubbard Jr., and I'm here to talk about home, vacant home, 1625, it's been vacant for over five or, five or six years, 1604, he's cooked the same way, over five or six years, now there's one at 1612, no, 1610 is vacant, and I don't know how long it's going to be, but I wonder, I haven't heard anything about home, vacant homes up here, I wonder why, and, and I, I'm sure glad you mentioned about critters, well, there was, alley, alley, there were sewer rats and everything on 1625, I had to throw poison over there, is that, is that anybody's concern, if this is any concern here, tell me where to go, and I'll go there, is anybody concerned about the vacant homes that stays five and six years or longer, you can't come here and talk about it, where, where would I go? I'll go there, too, I don't.
No, this is the right place.
I know, I've been, everybody's been talking about this, about leaves and this and that there, tell me where, and I'll go, too, anybody know? You've been talking about the leaves and everything, does anybody know?
Yeah, we can get the addresses from you, and then get a status on what, what it, where it is in the process with, they're boarded up properties, I imagine.
Well, that's very concerning to me.
Right.
I go out the back door at 20, 1625, I go out, and the west is, that's 1604, they've been there for over five or six years or longer, now, it seemed like nobody seemed to care about that, but I do, and I imagine somebody else does, too, but, but listen, I don't understand, you talk about leaves, hey, they've got, been four or five hours, so we're checking leaves, that's been there, been there, and it's more concerning about that, I got this house there, I know it's sewer rats and everything else been over, I threw poison over there, that's all.
Mr. Hubbard, is the one on, are both of them on Cook Street, or is one on Lawrence?
There's one on, one on Lawrence, 1625.
1625 is on Lawrence, correct.
Right across, in the back of my alley.
Right.
Then 1604 is, that's, that's been there for five or six years, you, you have branches and everything to throw there, and then there's 1610, I don't know how long that's going to be.
Those are on, those two are on Cook, correct, and 1625 is on Lawrence, Director Mahoney?
There's one at 1625 East Lawrence, one at 1604 East Cook, there's one at 1610, what, Cook Street.
Okay.
But, but it seemed like nobody concerned about vacant homes, there's nothing, there's nothing good around there, nothing but animals, creatures, unless, unless settle that, trying to get that taken care of also.
Mr. Hubbard, we do have an ordinance that addresses boarded up and abandoned homes, but oftentimes, it just takes a while for them to work their way through the process when you're, you know, when you're working with the homeowners, and trying to figure out who owns the, owns the home, it takes a while for it to work its way through the process, but, but we do have an ordinance that addresses it, and I'm quite sure that Mark will check on those for you, and we'll find out where they are in the process.
Did you hear what I said, now, five or six years on both of them homes are better, and you mean, and you haven't got to that yet?
Well, it just, it just depends, it depends on the status of the house, and if you can identify the homeowner, and, but.
But we'll get the status, if you'd give Mark Mahoney your number, we can give you a call after we check it, and it depends on the property owner, if they pay their boarding up fees, and things of that nature, but we'll check the status and get with Mark Mahoney and get back with you on it.
It's not boarded up at all.
No, it's not, okay.
It's just nothing there, it's nothing there, nobody's concerned, branches are here, 1627, 25, it's been that way.